Well, Clerk Johns, I guess we'll get started. Okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so before we start the actual meeting, I'm sorry to say that I have several new reporters that I want to remember. So please bear with me. This is a tradition we have. It's important to the council to remember those that passed away. So first, former Ward Four City Councilor Frank Casey died due to complications from COVID-19. Counselor Casey moved to Newburyport in 1943, and he graduated from the high school in '47. He was a veteran in the Korean conflict, and he served in Ward Four in the late 60s when urban renewal was under heated debate. We also lost Water and Sewer Commissioner Bob Cook. He passed away this month from cancer. Commissioner Cook was from Philly originally, raised in New London, I think. He was a civil engineer specialized in drinking water, wastewater, and he served on our commission for many years. We lost also Pat Burke Frye in January. Ms. Frye was a New Jerseyite, but she moved to Plum Island when her husband retired and they she really excelled as a community volunteer. I want to remember her at the Plum Island Lighthouse, Newburyport Public Library, and as a warden and poll worker in Ward One P. Former Ward One City Councilor David McFarland has died due to complications from dementia. Counselor McFarland was a civil engineer. I think he was a PhD, Air Force veteran, like Counselor Casey, a longtime Plum Islander. He was an outspoken critic of the Water and Sewer Service Project. And we're sorry to lose him. Finally, Chris Snow has passed away. Chris, many will remember, was one of the premier antiques dealers and auctioneers in town. He served on the Board of the Historical Society, but in the early, early 70s, he was one of the original pioneers on In Street when it was redeveloped. So please join me in a moment of silence for these people. Thank you. I guess we'll do call order.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well done. For the meeting of February 22nd, Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane is absent. Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Tontar.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Wallace.
Present.
Counselor Z.
I'm here, and Counselor Lane is in the attendees or who?
No, I just added him. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here.
Thank you, Counselor Lane. So noted. And Counselor Devlin.
Here.
And Counselor Argon.
Here.
We have 11 present, all accounted for.
All right, thank you. Late file items to describe?
Well, there are four, I'm sorry to say. I sent them around today. Actually, they're all communications. Communication 306 is a late-file memorandum from Director Port with respect to the Market Landing Appropriation Order. That actually was late. Technically, it was in the packet I sent out. Communication 307 is a late-file letter from Jane Snow regarding 57 Low Street. Communication 308 is a late-file letter from Patricia Temple, again regarding 57 Low Street. And Communication 309 is a late file. It's a compilation, really, of many emails. My apologies to some that sent in an email late, late in the day. Did not make this compilation, but it will be noted. And that is Communication 309. And those are the four late files this evening.
Motion to waive the rules and accept?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on waiving the rules to allow the late files. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
And Counselor Argon.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, if we go to public comment, we always have public comment at the beginning of our agenda by rule. A couple of things I want to go over because we have an awful lot of attendees. First of all, you'll notice if you stay on for the whole meeting, excuse me, because we have to do these meetings remote ever since COVID, and this is now our 11th month. Unfortunately, we have to do everything by roll call vote. Can't do any voice votes, so it gets to be quite tedious. So bear with us. Second, I know we received a flood of emails and phone calls, and Counselor Connell had sponsored an ordinance, a zoning ordinance, number 71, having to do with Plum Island overlay district. And he informed the clerk today that he is pulling that. So I want to make clear to all the members of the public what the other counselors know, which is that ordinance is no longer proposed to come into the council tonight. So it's not coming in. There was another controversial ordinance having to do with Plum Island, which I think is number 69. And that has to do with the barrier island regulation. It's not a zoning ordinance. I believe that's still on our agenda. Now, the ground rules for public comment are pretty simple. We want to give everyone a chance, so we keep it short, two minutes. If more than, I would say, 30 people want to speak, I would have to shorten it to one minute. Otherwise, we're here for hours and hours, and it doesn't give everyone a chance. As far as topic, anything on our agenda is valid to speak on. You just need to give your personal name and your home address, so we know who you are for the record. Please, you know, try to observe some decorum. Whatever it is you do on Facebook, please don't do it here. And with that, we have to do it electronically. Where people raise their hands, you know, the little blue open palm on Zoom. So if everybody who wishes to speak, please raise their hand now. It'll keep you in order. And that way, I can have a count of how many people there are. And I have to keep time, too. So let's see. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 19, 20, 21. 21, okay. 24, 25. All right, we're right at the threshold 30. If it stays at I think I'll stick to my rule. Everyone's going to get two minutes. I'll time you. One last thing is you don't have to repeat. If someone before you has said something well, you can say, "I agree with the previous speaker, Mr. or Ms. X," and you'll be on record. And you don't need to, you know, repeat everything they said. Okay, that's enough on ground rules. Let me get the timer ready. And I've got to work all the buttons here. The first person to speak has the initials J.L. and then M. J.L. and then M.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mike, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Judy Lynn Marchesini. I reside at 1555th Street, Plum Island, Newburyport. I respectfully request that the city council and all city departments discard and take off the table any more changes to the Plum Island Overlay District, and that going forth, any proposed changes be brought to the taxpayers, residents, and voters well in advance of reaching the council floor. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Smith.
Yeah, my name's Stephen Smith. I also reside at 1555th Street. My comment is I'm mystified why now these proposals have come up, number 69 and number 71. My hypothesis, of course, is that there's a scare with the erosion going on and realization that the sewer is not bulletproof as as we were sold back in the day. And I'm a little concerned that it's gotten this far without any input. It's normal procedures should be to identify a problem, have a discussion, have some input before proposing a solution. I mean, this is typical putting cart before the horse. And I'm just scratching my head and then wondering how we got here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and if you've spoken, if you could take your hand out, but I can do it, too. Next is Jean Novak. Mr. Novak, I think you have to hit your own mute.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, there you go.
Well, thank you very much. Jean Novak, I reside at 161 Northern Boulevard. And I agree with the two previous speakers, Judy Lynn and Stephen Smith. I'm mystified, too. That's a great word, adjective to say, as to what's going on here without any input from, you know, the voters here in Plum Island. A couple of comments I would say quickly is that, having read 069 and 071, I understand 071 has been withdrawn. I think one thing we need is really clarification as to what problem is we're trying to fix here. And two, what does this actually mean? I've read it through, and depending on how it's interpreted and how it's applied, this could be severely restrictive. A couple of things I'd like the city council to consider, that my reading of the Constitution, Fifth Amendment, is this could easily be considered a taking for the public good, which is going to require compensation of all the property owners on Plum Island. I'm not sure if you've considered that. This would significantly diminish the value of properties on Plum Island. So the, you know, the compensation, the tax credits would have to be significant, in my view. The other thing I'm going to ask you all to consider is I read this, and again, I'm not quite sure how to interpret it and what the interpretation would be and what the full implications of it would be. But it seems to me like you're getting very close to writing building construction code regulations here. Zoning generally regulates the use of land. The state building code regulates how you do construction. And if it is determined to be construction regulation, it would be illicit. It wouldn't be lawful. The only folks, the only state entity that's allowed to write building code regulations is the State Board of Building Regulations and Standards, and that's by mass general law. So I'd ask your attorneys to call the attorneys at the state to see
Please wrap up.
To see if that's in violation. In addition to that, you've got FEMA's coastal construction requirements. And my understanding is that FEMA
Please, please, please wrap up, Mr. Novak. You're out of time.
Has agreements with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts DCR that regulates construction in a flood zone, and this may jeopardize that agreement with not only with the city new report, but the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And you may want to reach out to Eric Carlson at the DCR to confirm whether that's correct or incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, it just says Mark.
Hi, this is Mark Wright. I live at 55 Reservation Terrace. And I'm speaking in opposition to Ordinance 69 and Ordinance 71, if it was ever to miraculously reappear. The Ordinance 69, in communication with Counselor Khan, is designed, by her admission, to fix loopholes that she says are in the Plum Island Overlay District that haven't been properly enforced by the zoning board, or in disagreement to the way the zoning board is enforcing them. My recommendation would be, rather than trying to fix it this way, is to spend time with the zoning board and bring them up to speed or into alignment with what is expected. I agree with previous speakers that this is very prohibitive. There is a value assigned to what they're trying to take away from homeowners. And I also believe that it would be unconstitutional in the way that it's presented. The Plum Island Overlay District already has the most the strictest zoning enforcement for the whole of Newburyport, and doesn't provide a lot of leeway. And so I don't see how making it even more restrictive would be of any public benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kristen and Stan Norton.
Yes, thank you. This is Stan Norton. We live at 29 Harbor Street. We'd just like to reiterate the comments that have been made already, and just to express our astonishment that elected officials of the city would attempt to impose such draconian terms on its residents. It seems poorly thought out, not clear at all in the implication, or really in what the letter of these documents state. And while 71 appears to have been withdrawn this evening, we want to be very clear. We don't want to see it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mariah Newman.
Hello, I am here to speak about Newburyport Youth Services. I reside at 8 Francis Drive in Newburyport. I want to ask the city council to purchase 57 Low Street and create a site selection committee to find a permanent home that meets the goals and needs for Newburyport Youth Services. It is imperative that NYS moves out of the Brown School in a timely manner. They cannot wait another five years. NYS has provided me with so much over the years, and we need to provide them with a safe home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Erin Newman.
Hi, my name is Erin Newman, and I reside at 8 Francis Drive, Ward Five. And I'd just like to support what Mariah said, and excuse me. And we asked the city council to purchase 57 Low Street and create a site selection committee to find a permanent home that meets the needs for NYS. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rich Winnicore.
I would like to just agree with the previous two speakers in support of the city council approving the purchase of 57 Low Street and creating a search committee for a new home for Newburyport Youth Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lila Wright.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, this is Lila Wright. I reside at 55 Reservation Terrace. I am, as and absolutely angered by the insensitivity of these two ordinances that were put forth at this time. As most of the island knows, in our particular area, we are still dealing with the damage from the recent flooding, and we've yet to have many of the counselors come down and actually take a look at it in person, because it is pretty devastating. And when you start talking about minor modifications, whether they're in the general general bylaws or the zoning bylaws, when they impact the people that are already living within very restricted building codes under the Plum Island Overlay District, you should at least have the decency to have a conversation with them first. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lee McLaughlin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Lee McLaughlin. I reside at 975th Street. I agree with all previous figures regarding Ordinance 69 and 71. I just want to add, I am opposed to both ordinances and strongly urge they be discarded tonight and not sent to committee. Those of us who reside in the Reservation Terrace area are facing unimaginable stress trying to save or repair our homes from the damage and destruction we've endured. Both proposals will hinder our prospects for safely securing our homes, which, for some of us, are our most valued asset. Also, proposing these ordinances during a pandemic, which silences many voices, is unconscionable. I'm grateful for the city counselors who I know are supporting us tonight, and I hope others also hear our voice and discard both ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Olson.
Good evening. This is Mike Olson, 28 Charles Street. We ask that you vote yes to purchase the Low Street property for municipal purposes. Given the below-market price, it is a great opportunity for the city, whether for NYS, the Parks Department, or other use. We understand the need for a NYS site selection committee. We just ask that Low Street be kept on the table as one option. By not purchasing the land, you eliminate one of the most promising options to meet NYS needs now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Maureen Adams.
Hi, my name is Maureen Adams. I live at 975th Street. And I just want to put my support behind everyone that has spoken thus far on ordinances 69 and 71. I do not believe these should go to committee, especially if it means that people will not be able to repair or make updates once this goes to a committee or once it's put on notice. I'm not sure how many people are on this call now, but I know there are a great number of people that, for one reason or another, not having proper equipment to do Zoom or not knowing how to do Zoom, are not here tonight. And I think it's sort of horrendous that we're doing this during a COVID pandemic when you can't get the full representation or see the full representation. I think the council should maybe spend their time and effort to help find the proper modifications to the jetty to help correct the unnatural erosion that's been happening to us. And maybe these other issues would not be so important. But the bottom line is, I think both ordinances should be discarded and not brought back to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Marjorie Pine.
Yes, my name is Marjorie Pine. I live at 18 Basin Street. I am strongly opposed to both ordinances. I think it restricts property rights. And if you want to restrict my property rights, then I think you need to keep my taxes at the current payment level, not rate, but if I'm paying $6,000 for taxes and you're not going to allow me to do any improvements or repairs on my property, you don't deserve any more money from me. And then, when I sell the property, if I sell the property, then you can increase it much as rental-controlled properties are handled. I think that it is naive to think that we can not improve our properties reasonably. There are already overlays. There are already restrictions which are pretty severe, and I think that we should not have to endure anything more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott Yule.
Hi, this is actually Tasha Koff. I'm at 8 Fair Street. And I'm calling in support of the purchase of 57 Low Street, as Mike Olson stated very well, to purchase that property free of any conditions that may prevent its use by Youth Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Sprague.
Hi, good evening. This is Jeff's wife, Donna and Jeff Sprague. I'd like to say that we are
I'm sorry, the address?
Oh, sorry, 1563rd Street on Plum Island, Newburyport.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, I am strongly opposed to the Ordinance 69 and any part of 71 that ever wants to come back to see the light of day. They're ridiculous. And people are making beautiful points, so I don't need to belabor. I agree completely with Judy Lynn, Jean Novak, Kristen and Stan Norton, Lila Wright, Maureen Adams, and Marjorie Pine. Good job. I really liked what you had to say about taxes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elaine Nickerson.
Hi, I'm Elaine Nickerson. Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
And I'm at 1178th Street. And I'm just pretty baffled by both of the ordinances, but now I guess 69 is the one that we're talking about. The city has, as far as I can see, never really enforced the current P.I.O.D. in any consistent manner, and I think that that would be a much better starting point, is to show due diligence in the rules that are already in place and start to enforce them. I know that people who have honored the P.I.O.D. should not have to suffer for those that have not and possibly currently don't honor it. And I realize that for our lead, I understand from what I've heard that the ZBA are often frustrated with the loopholes of the P.I.O.D., but I don't think that this is the way to address it. I think it should have been addressed long ago when the P.I.O.D. was first introduced, which I think was around 2002 or '03. But I also agree with everything else. Everybody else said who was against it, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We've done pretty well at people staying under time, but I keep getting new new people signing up to speak. So if you, I won't make you stay under two minutes, because I said everyone gets two minutes, but I really do appreciate when people say, "I agree with the previous speaker. It saves us time," and you get to be on the record. Next is Haley and John.
Yes, hi, this is John Siminski, 357th Street. And I do not support these ordinances, both 69 and 71, and contend these ordinances would actually not reduce risks as outlined. I agree with all the previous comments made, and I specifically call out the greater risk to those of us property owners with original cottages built 60, 70, or greater years ago, when building codes were different and less robust. We need to maintain our existing property rights to renovate and rebuild, to bring our homes up to current standards, and proactively prevent against damage from storms if we so choose. Adding additional square footage would not materially increase the risk as compared to not being able to modernize our homes and bring them up to current building standards. I agree with the previous comments about implications on tax base and how this would reduce property values. And I think there's more pressing issues for this council to deal with, like the terrible water quality that exists on the island that presents a clear health risk today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dominic Garibaldi.
Hello.
Hello, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Hi, Dominic Garibaldi, 1467th Street. I agree with everybody that preceded me and who spoke so eloquently. Most of my neighbors are not here. We're unaware of this meeting tonight because of the short notice. I would like to know the impetus of this, of why these ordinances were drawn up. I highly recommend both these ordinances be discarded and not postponed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Belts. You're breaking up. Can you try again? Mr. Belts? No, you were breaking up. Can you try one more time? Give it one more try. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just said I basically support the discarding of one of these bills for the same reasons that everyone
Thank you, Mr. Belts. Next is Luke Shipman.
Hi, Luke Shipman, 217 Northern Boulevard.
I agree with everything everybody said. It makes me happy to hear everybody on the island saying the same thing. I will touch on a few things that are confusing to me. From a legal perspective, the United States Supreme Court has ruled as to the limitations of zoning laws. They cannot be arbitrary. There's a limit to the amount that they can diminish value without compensation. They must have public benefit. In fact, even the dissenting opinions in cases where zoning laws were restricted, even dissenting opinion held that they cannot put people at safety risks, which I think Haley and John brought up an excellent point about the number of old cottages on the island that are in need of update and in need of renovation for those reasons. And you can't retrospectively deprive rights of, deprive people of rights that they've purchased, and you, you are purchasing renovation rights when you purchase a piece of property. I also agree with everybody else. It's incredibly confusing to me why we would be considering this at a time right now from a priority perspective where we've seen an embarrassing plan and response to the flooding. We've paid for these sandbags. We've paid for the crews to deploy them, and now they didn't even last a tide. And now we have both private and public damage that we have to, that we have to pay for to repair. The other thing is, as it relates to the Plum Island specific zoning laws, is I find it hypocritical where we are under the most strict zoning laws, and yet I see things like the Flurry Group developing up our waterfront. I see the developments going up on Colby Farm Road, and it's odd to me that we would be focused on specifically the Newburyport residents on Plum Island specifically while certainly Betterment and even large-scale developments are happening throughout the city. So I agree with everybody else, and those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jared Hubbard.
Hi, my name is Jared Hubbard. I live at 49 Wardman Street. I just wanted to commend the council for the due diligence done over the last five months on the purchase of the 57 Low Street location. And along with more than 1,100 Newburyporters who've signed a public petition, I'd ask the council to approve the purchase of the 57 Low Street location and consider it as a new home for NYS. I know that certain of the councilors were for this purchase before they were against it, but I hope that all the council this evening has the vision to see the Low Street property as a great site for the city to own and use for the Betterment of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Camille Camo.
Hi, my name is Camille Como. I'm at 37 Harvest Street, and I'd like to say that I stand with all of my neighbors who have eloquently expressed their dismay at both of these ordinances, and I ask that they be removed from consideration at this time. I think there are a lot better ways to address problems of zoning breaches and, and a lot more things that Newburyport needs to focus on besides limiting the property rights of taxpayers.
Thank you. Dr. Leonard Davolio.
Well, just raising some concerns related to the way these-
Doctor, just, we just need your address.
Sorry, 655th. Raising some concerns related to the way these ordinances were even introduced. I think folks should be deserves some answers related to this. Number, number one, I isn't standard practice to basically have council members of other wards draft and submit ordinances that affect our ward without even consulting our council people. Number two, it's not really clear what problems these ordinance are intended to solve. It certainly isn't to relieve stress on one of the newest water and sewage systems the state has. The, the owners of which, or at least the maintainers of which have made clear they don't experience any stress and that the system was planned for additional stress. And then finally, it's surprising that these have been drafted and submitted with, with no real thought or consideration of the financial repercussions, not only to the homeowners, but to the city in terms of reduced tax revenue, or even the, it seems like the amounting lawsuits that will certainly ensue once you try to erode the property rights of the owners. It just all seems rushed, hasty, unprofessional, and it would be interesting to find out why all of this came to be in the way that it did as quickly as it did. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joanne and Lee Lane. Try unmuting yourself.
Hello.
Go ahead.
I have the, so we are at 270 Northern Boulevard and appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Thank you very much to everyone that has expressed opposition to these ordinances. We are in complete agreement and ask that the council consider the emotional toll as well on folks. For many people, it's been a lifelong dream to buy a home and live on my island. Many of us have spent many of our summer months here as, as kids growing up. And to be able to buy a home is a lifelong dream for many. And for us it is, and we would appreciate the opportunity and the ability to continue to live in our home and to do what we need to, to make it a a place for our families to grow together. So thank you very much for the consideration, and again, we voice our vigorous opposition to these ordinances. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next is Juliet Walker.
Good evening, Juliet Walker, 13 Eagle Street, speaking in support of the acquisition of the 57 Low Street property tonight with no restrictions. I urge you to separate the land acquisition itself from the future use of the property. Any future use of the property should be subject to a public process to determine the most suitable public use for the property. Any conservation restriction could be considered as part of that process, but I urge you to acquire the property with no strings attached. While I personally support this site being considered for a potential site for NYS, I think that decision needs to be part of a public process that is separate and distinct from the land acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Snow.
Jane Snow, 9 Coppin Street. I just want to voice my concern about the purchase of Low Street without knowing how, what the building is going to be used for. If it's used for office space, it would probably take another 100,000 in order to prepare the building for use. If it were to be used for youth services, because the building is only 55 square feet and currently youth services uses about 16,000 square, square feet of the Brown School, it would mean a major construction project, which is in the C I P listed as about nine million. And taxpayers need to, to know that. So if in fact, we do know what the building's purpose is, I would greatly appreciate that it, we're told before the building is purchased. We're desperate, in desperate need of a new fire station too, and that should be a number one priority, and I know you have a tremendous amount of things to think of, but please consider those questions when you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bruce Campbell.
Hi, Bruce Cable, 10 Chestnut Street. Just to say, I would prefer that we buy the Low Street property without encumbrance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dave Feng.
Hi, Dave Feng, 17 Barker Street. Raising my strong opposition to ordinance 69 and 71. While I understand sort of the need for kind of smart development and simplified zoning, which has been expressed, I'm really puzzled by how these ordinance were presented, especially when there's a, a the purpose of trying to have open communication. I think everyone previous to me has expressed various aspects very well and in alignment with how I feel, but I think, just to summarize, I think these proposals somehow unfairly target Plum Island when there's a lot of zoning and other things that are probably necessary across Newburyport. They're extremely restrictive and also potentially unlawful. So I do believe that there were some really good recommendations in terms of other, other tactics to take, whether it's helping the zoning board, et cetera, take action and on the already restrictive Plum Island restrictions that are in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Moody.
Yes, on behalf of Alex Moody, Kristen Moody at 24 Harbor Street, Plum Island, Newburyport, Mass, and of future beneficiaries, Sawyer Moody, Tate Moody, and Maris Moody, I want to say I strongly oppose, or we strongly oppose, ordinance 69 should be discarded this evening, and like everybody else said, 71 should not return. I specifically agree with Mr. Novak and Dr. Davolio regarding councilors of other wards introducing ordinances. And I do want to state that our resolve as a community is stronger than you think. Our resources are vast and more powerful than you think. And I would like to quote John Adams, "Property must be secured or liberty cannot exist." I would like my email at 11:48 a.m. this morning to be put on record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, I think we have that on record, but if you could check.
I will. I think it is.
Yeah. Next is Eliza Boebek.
Hi, good evening. I'm Eliza Boebek at 92 Prospect Streets, and I'm one of the co-signers of the petition to purchase 57 Low Street for NYS, and I would like to continue to advocate for the purchase of this building as well as to push for a permanent home for Newburyport Youth Services that is both safe for children to be in, as well as meeting the needs of Newburyport Youth Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Howe. Chris Howe is muted.
Hello.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, there you go.
My name is Mark Alfred. I live at 9 Annapolis Way. And I, in regard to ordinances 69 and 71, I agree with everyone who's spoken before me. To the author of this massive overreach on both ordinances, I find it remarkable that even while people are dealing with a pandemic that's affected every aspect of most people's lives, that some of you have missing ethics and morals, a bandwidth, and attempt to interfere with constitutional property rights of hundreds of Plum Island residents that are entitled by federal law. I find your behavior and the attempt at introducing these ordinances arbitrary and capricious, not legal, unbelievably incompetent and mean spirited. And I'm saying what some people won't step up and say. You have attempted to use the very crisis of improperly managed restoration of the South Jetty by D C R and the Army Corps of Engineer, engineers, both complicit. Just like the Water and Sewer Project of 2006, it was an abomination here. You're elected as elected officials, you've mismanaged that to our ongoing detriment. So please don't confuse the shoreline damage in Newburyport with ineptitude of our electeds. Don't even attempt to pass the buck here. Would you attempt to force this compliance with your whims through the entire city of Newburyport? It's doubtful. None of you would even allow this nonsense to go forward. It's shameful that we're spending our evenings trying to protect our property. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next is CJ LeBlanc.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Charles LeBlanc. I'm at 18 Woodman Way, Unit 1, and my wife wants to speak out to me if that's okay.
Well, yeah, okay, go ahead.
So both, I'm not a Plum Island resident, you know, I live, I live in the north and almost in Turkey Hill near the highway, but I do completely support the residents on Plum Island about, you know, about sneaking in new rules and regulations, you know, that are not, you know, the weird way that was snuck in by councilors from other wards that really shouldn't be putting their feet in or they know this is other people's business like that. So I do support them completely. It concerns me that, you know, if this were successful on Plum Island, are these other, are these councilors or whoever gonna start trying this in other wards and other areas of the city next? So that's the first issue. The other issue is, I completely support purchase of 57 Low Street for for city use, preferably for Newburyport Youth Services, but, you know, wherever the city ends up deciding, but I definitely think the city council should consider buying the property.
Thank you, and, and your wife, sir?
Real quick, Julia Lewis, Mr. Olson, and Mr. Ms. Boebek all had great comments, and I want here's my wife.
Hi, Amy LeBlanc, 18 Woodman Way, Apartment 1. And I just want to say I'm in complete support of all of the, my fellow neighbors on Newburyport Youth Services and the city purchasing 57 Low Street. Newburyport Youth Services has done so much for our city and our families and our kids that they deserve a location where they can service more and more families. They just can't do it for the next five years in the Brown School. It's just no way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're, we're getting to the last 13 or, or so. I, I would just ask usually personal attacks, try to tone those down. You can absolutely find fault with all the elected officials for what we've done wrong, but let's, let's try to, try to keep it on the up and up. Dave, I think 55th Street.
Yes, good evening. I'm a property owner in 1355th Street. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak, and I'm grateful for my, my, my wonderful-
I'm sorry, could we, we just need your last name.
Oh, David Denny, 55th Street.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yes, I am grateful for the council to, to hear my complete opposition of both ordinance 69 and ordinance 71. I am grateful to have such wonderful neighbors who I completely supported in the previous comments. I think we should, we should remove these, any entertainment of this is nonsensical. It makes no sense, and is we really should rethink this and remove some of these from, from the process and for the, to see the full light of day. Nevertheless, moving forward, I suggest the, the city council perhaps suggest invest in infrastructure or fund some C I P work in Plum Island. It may address some of the concerns that, that won't be done by, by zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ron Barrett.
Do you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. My name is Ron Barrett. I'm the president of the Plum Island Taxpayers, and I'm probably one of the only people that was working on the whole Plum Island over the whole project. And when we were doing this, we had to go back and forth between attorneys, the federal government, the state government, the locals, Newbury, Newburyport, we had had two years of meetings with the public, two years of meeting with the planning boards of Newbury and Newburyport, and it was a lot of work to do this. And everybody had to keep informed when we did it. We had public meetings. We did all this correctly, even though it was hard. It was hard on all these people. It's very restrictive. How can two people do this without having these meetings? This is, this is nuts. We we should just stop and do things correctly, just come back to the people. In Plum Island, I've started the M R B A, which we have meetings all the time, separate with the covert, and we go over problems on Plum Island. I haven't seen any of these people there to understand what our problems are on Plum Island. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. We, we just need your street address.
18 Huttons.
Thank you. The, the next person is A S H, just initials.
Hi, this is Avram Hayfitz. It's 6 P Street on Plum Island, and I strongly oppose ordinance 69 and 71, and strongly support all those who spoke tonight already in opposition to those ordinances. One thing I'd add to this conversation is it, if the city council is so concerned about the, the water and sewer lines in that system, then they ought to be working with the homeowners to protect their property and thereby protecting the integrity of that system. And specifically, they ought to be helping homeowners build seawalls, repair seawalls, extend seawalls as well as retaining walls and not restricting that further. And we saw, I think, this play out with Annapolis Way- as well as retaining walls and not restricting that further. And we saw, I think, this play out with Annapolis Way. Where those homeowners at their own expense and through much fighting and aggravation did, did build retaining walls. And eight years later, they've been proven right. They saved their homes and they saved the water in the sewer system. So I'd like to hear from this council in the future what you're going to do to help residents protect their homes and particularly these coastal engineering structures and making it facilitating residents being able to put those in place or expand them and repair them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bill Edwards. Bill Edwards, I think you're muted. Mr. Edwards, you're you just need to unmute yourself, I think.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my wife, Michelle Edwards. We live at fifty-three Reservation Terrace. And like all the other speakers before, we strongly condemn Ordinance sixty-nine and seventy-one. For us, they were particularly painful as our home will most likely be destroyed by the next storm that arises. So it's difficult for us to understand how counselors can come up with those ordinances, especially when we may have to repair our house when it is completely damaged. I, I would say to those authors, come up to fifty-three Reservation Terrace and visit my home and see how close it is to the water's edge and tell me why they would come up with ordinances like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Judy Pickett.
Hi, I also stand with my neighbors who oppose Ordinance sixty-nine and seventy-one, should it resurface? And specifically want to reference the email response from Counselor Khan indicating the quote-unquote loopholes in the PIOD. I agree with my neighbors that this should be addressed at the city level. Given the fact that the PIOD has existed about nineteen years. And I also agree with Luke Shippment that those of us living in older homes, mine's a hundred and twenty-three years old, that we should have the opportunity to update our homes within the parameters of the current PIOD. And thank you for allowing our voices to be heard.
Thank you. Lori Hoffman.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to voice my strong opposition to the ordinances sixty-nine and seventy-one. And, and let everybody know, my fellow residents, I appreciate all your articulate comments and ideas. And that's it.
Thanks. I, I'm sorry. Did, did you give your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, twelve sixty-seventh Street.
Okay, thank you. Next is Dr. Venditti. Yourself muted.
Thank you very much. I live at twenty-five Basin Street with my wife, Dr. Mary Ellen Ellers. We want to both support all our neighbors and friends on Plum Island who have very articulately opposed both ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Mc, I already did, Bo Ryan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. This is Bo Ryan of seventeen fifty-nine Street. And I agree with all my neighbors, what they said before, and that I strongly appro, oppose both these ordinances.
Thank you. Clerk Jones, I already called on, on Lee McLaughlin, right?
Believe way back when?
No? Okay, let me, let me try. Lee McLaughlin?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, my sister did speak earlier, but I'm Ellen Moniz. I live at
Okay, all right.
I live at six seventy-fifth Street. And I would like to say I agree with all the previous speakers regarding ordinance sixty-nine and seventy-one. And would like to go on the record as being strongly opposed to these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean Reardon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Sean Reardon, five Lowest Street. I just wanted to thank all the counselors for all their hard work regarding the Low Street Purchase, fifty-seven Low Street. I know this hasn't been an easy couple of months. I'm strongly in favor of the purchase of Low Street with no restrictions. I think if we have to make restrictions to the property, I just don't think it's worth it. I think anything should be on the table for the city for, for current or future use. I hope after this, regardless of how the vote goes, I hope we all can kind of get behind finding a permanent home for Newburyport Youth Services that services all of our, our kids in town. I think, you know, some of our most vulnerable and needy and at-risk kids need better access to youth services. And I, I think going forward, I think we need to get, get behind that effort. I think we can solve this equity issue. If, if it's true, it's got to be someplace else. And I'm breaking up, sorry.
That's okay, you're back.
Okay, sorry, I have bad connection. But just to keep it short, I think we can find a place for them. I think we can solve this equity issue. And I think going forward, we just have to keep in mind, you know, what's best for the kids of Newburyport. And I think we'll find a great home for them.
Thank you. Next is Justin Ponting.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Justin Ponting of eleven Barker Street. And I want to say that I would agree with all my neighbors on Plum Island that ordinances sixty-nine and seventy-one, we need to do away with those. I bought a house out there six years ago, a small house with a young family, planning to add on to it. My family's growing. My house needs to grow. Spent two years with two different architects designing a house that meets meets all the Plum Island Overlay District rules. Got it approved without any variances in the midst of building a building permit. And either one of those would put an end to, I guess, a dream of ours. So again, I like to say at sixty-nine and seventy-one, we need to get rid of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Eriti.
Yes, hello. Good evening. My name is Michael Eriti. And I live at ten Basin Street. I want to throw all my support behind all of my neighbors. All so unanimously expressed, I think, opinions that we all share. That I, I and my wife, Michelle Eriti, absolutely object and disagree with ordinance sixty-nine and seventy-one. And Councilman, thank you for hearing us this evening.
Thank you. Next is, it says the Net Studio.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, just need your name and address.
Yeah, I'm sorry for using my work account here. My name is Lou Glassy. And I live at twenty-one Overlook Street on Plum Island. And I just want to stand with my neighbors and friends on Plum Island in opposition to these two ordinances. I think the overlay and the current zoning gives the city and the neighborhood adequate protection against unwise expansion on properties. And I think we, I think it also takes away the voices of homeowners here and diminishes their property values unduly. It's unwise. The way to handle these situations is to put them in front of the zoning board, allow the neighbors to speak out, allow the homeowner to speak out, have a say and have a conversation. I won't keep you long. Thank you for the opportunity. Just want to stand with my neighbors here on Plum Island.
Thank you. Next is Susan Grillo.
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a Newbury resident, but I am also on the Board of Directors of the Plum Island Taxpayers Association. And I am personally and also on behalf of PITA opposed to ordinances sixty-nine and seventy-one. I think they go way too far and are out of bounds. And I appreciate all of the Plum Island residents who have spoken tonight in opposition. And I would like to be able to have better communication regarding any changes that the city council feels are necessary to the current zoning ordinances in the PIOD. And perhaps have discussions with the community. And Plum Island Taxpayers Hall is a great place to host such a meeting when we can gather in person. And rather than pushing this through it as a Zoom meeting, I'd appreciate it if the residents could have more input into the matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Metzger.
Yeah, so this is, this is Eric Metzger. If I live out on seventeen fifty-fifth Street in Newburyport. Very encouraged to see how much resident support there's been for this, for us to, to oppose the sixty-nine and seventy-one proposals. I, like everyone else, strongly oppose. My wife, Carrie, and I would like to go on the record to say that I think everyone's done a pretty good job explaining the reasons why. But in, in particular, it seems very aggressive and very cavalier in terms of the potential consequences it might have for, for all of our property values out here. And life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. So anyhow, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and go on the record. Thank you very much. Thanks for everything that you guys do on the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Candace McMahon, twelve fifty-four Street. I'm here with my husband Greg Elliott. And we would just like to just be on the record that we are completely in support of our neighbors here on Plum Island and completely oppose both ordinances and hope that they are not brought back up and that any kind of this discussion is better communicated to everybody, that we have time to research these in advance rather than the short notice that we received about this. But thank you very much for the work you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Marcy Friedman.
Hi, yes, I'm at thirteen sixty-seventh Street in Plum Island. And I also want to just go on the record, I agree with everything that's been said. I just want to go on the record that I oppose the ordinances. And I also would like to state that I'm, I'm, I'm shocked that our couns, our council counselor, Sharif, was not informed about this beforehand. This is all for the neighborhood been thrown together at the last minute because we all found out at the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Let me get back to our agenda. Bear with me. Mayor's comment. Let me recognize, well, I, I'm sorry, I just closed public comment. Someone named Mike has raised a hand. I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I didn't get to you in time. Mayor Holiday. Can you hear us?
Now I'm unmuted. Good evening, counselors. I will keep this very quick. I know already you've had a, a long evening of public comment. You have my update that I sent you before the meeting. Happy to report that our COVID numbers continue to be moving in the right direction. Detail is in my report about that. Want residents to know that the two-on-one hotline was established a week ago Friday for those over seventy-five to sign up for the vaccine. We were really concerned that the site at the senior center was not going to be able to get enough vaccines to continue forward. That's Beth Israel Leahy Health and Energix Hospital site. And it looks like they will be able to continue to go forward. We're just don't have a lot of details about the numbers of vaccines they will be able to get, received conversation from Governor Baker and a follow-up with Lieutenant Governor Polito, concerns about not wanting to support vaccines for municipalities. We have come together with eight communities and we're surprised that we weren't going to be able to go forward. We did a nice job in terms of vaccinating our first responders and was very pleased to hear this weekend that they are supportive of us going forward. So tomorrow, we have a meeting with all the eight community health directors to begin to move a regional process forward. So there'll be more information coming on that. And in related to COVID, I would like to thank the General Government Subcommittee for a three-zero vote in support of bringing the resolution to honor all of the thirty-two victims we have lost to COVID on COVID Memorial Day, March first. And that at that point upon your passage tonight, which I anticipate, given the general government vote, that we will have flags flying at half-staff and I will reach out to our local churches to see if we could get that bells tolling thirty-two times to honor those victims. Information about our budget update is in my update. We are actively working on preparing the FY twenty-two budget and the capital improvement plan for you. And tomorrow is the, the initial presentation of the school budget by the superintendent. That meeting is at six-thirty, is on Zoom. If people would like to participate in that. Low Street, fifty-seven Low Street. As you know, this has been a process that I had started almost three years ago. Keeping you up to date on all of the particulars of this process as it moved forward. I worked with Council Igerman regarding a compromised position because we need eight votes in order to purchase this property and attaching Article ninety-seven just to the wetlands, which they would be protected anyway. As a way to go forward, it still leaves us with thirty-five thousand square feet of space for future development. Upon the affirmative vote to purchase this property, parks can go right in there. They've been using one of the garages. We will do a minimal amount of work in order to make that a field operation site and be able to consolidate all of their equipment from various parks. And they can use that for, they have said they would see that being feasible for them for up to three years. And then the site feasibility study for youth services can happen simultaneously. And then we can decide as a community who, what is the best use going forward for this particular site. Also, Jess, you've certainly heard from Plum Island residents tonight about the ordinances that were put forward. One was pulled clearly in terms of what these residents have been dealing with in terms of the jetty and the impact of erosion, the loss of the dune. It's just been really, really challenging for all of us working to support Plum Island. We have had a meeting again today with Army Corps of Engineer, really pushing to keep permitting for the dredging project, which is incredibly complex, on track. And we should have by the end of the week, I'm hoping a short-term solution where GZA and engineering team from Mass DOT has been working on a wood pile driving system. And hopefully I'll be able to present more information about that. We will be having a MRBA meeting on Wednesday to talk more about what's going on with the work that's coming between the two projects, the short-term solution as well as the dredging project. And finally, I just wanted to just say thank you to the counselors who were part of this review committee and community members and board members. Very happy to announce that Sasaki is in final contract negotiations with, for design of our Central Waterfront Park. Some of you may, who've been around a while, might remember Sasaki has decades of experience in planning waterfront parks and public spaces. They also have a history in our city where they were instrumental in creating a downtown master plan with then Mayor Matthews to help design what once urban renewal was in terms of demolishing downtown, how we could preserve our downtown instrumental and in-street ways to the water and the harbor walk. So we are very, very excited about Sasaki getting the bid for this particular park development, which has been a long time coming. And you will be voting on that at your next meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there questions from counselors from there? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Mayor Holiday. Me. All right. Consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening, Mr. President, consists of the following.
The approval of the minutes for the February 8th meeting. There are communications, five of them. The first are communications, communication 300, which is a letter from Betty Litschke regarding Plum Island to be received and filed. Communication 301 is the New Report Retirement Board appropriation letter regarding FY 2022, again, to be received and filed. Communication 303 is a letter from Craig Douglas regarding Low Street to be referred to planning and development. Communication 305 is a memo from on the Otto choke river from and including an aerial photo. That's from the planning office. That's also to go to a planning and development. And application 21, which is the secondhand motor vehicle license from New Report Sanoco. It's a reapplication again this year with its bond to go to license and permits. There are no transfers. There are two appointments. Appointment 233, Joe Copper, 8 Fruit Street to the Fruit Street Historic Committee, 331, 2024. And appointment 234, Cheryl H. Amy, 24 Milk Street to the New Report Housing Authority until 331, 2026. Following items are removed from their respective committees with the vote on the consent agenda, budget, and finance. Order 214, order 229, communication 281, order 235, communications 291 and 298 from general government, communications 241 and 242, order 240, and appointment 229. Planning and Development Committee, appointments 226, 230, 231, in two communications, communication 214 and 270. That is the consent agenda for the season, Mr. President.
Counselor Shan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we remove two, appointment 231 from the consent agenda?
Okay, that's removed. Any other? You don't, you don't need to. All it takes is one counselor.
I meant the whole, sorry, the whole motion approved the consent agenda.
Okay, your second.
Second. Second.
Roll call.
Motion approved the consent agenda with the one item removed. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane? Yes. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tantar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
Regular agenda.
Brings us to the mayor's update.
Motion received and file?
Second.
Any debate? Roll call.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tantar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel? Yes. Thank you. Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
Communications.
First communication is an engagement letter from KP Law with respect to being city solicitor. Communication 302.
Motion received and file?
Second.
Any debate? Roll call.
Roll call, receiving file, okay, let's see. Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane? Yes. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tantar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
If we could, could we take communications 304, 307, 308, and 309 together? Those are all.
Yep. Yeah, motion to collectively receive and file communication 304, 307, 308, and 309.
Second.
Any debate? Roll call, please.
That's 304, 307, 308, and 309, receiving file. Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tantar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yeah.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes. So that takes us back to communication 306, the updated memo.
Updated memo regarding market landing appropriation.
Motion to continue to March 8th.
Second. Second. Counsel Lane's seconded. Motion to continue at a date certain is debatable just on the issue of whether to continue it and what, to what date if anyone wants to ask, but March 8th is our next regular meeting. Not seeing any hands. Roll call.
Roll call to continue it to March 8th. Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tantar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes. Second reading appointments.
There's one second reading of appointment of Keith Hogan, 3 Bartlett Drive to the Trust Fund Commission until 3/1/2024.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Debate? Roll call.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tantar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes. Before we go on to orders, we remove from the consent agenda Walter Chagnot, first, first reading ZBA. Did we not?
Yes, we did. Appointment 231.
Right.
Okay.
Prefer that back.
Well, hold on. First, does anyone want to recuse him or herself?
I do. Thank you.
Counsel Devlin is recused. I'll go ahead, Counsel Shan.
Motion to refer back to planning and development?
Second.
But if I might, Mr. President, it's not in the consent agenda, so it's not out.
Not in the consent agenda, so it's not out.
So it does not need to be removed. It's already there.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I was, this was to remove it automatically when it came to the committee report?
Correct.
Okay. All right. We'll get to it on committee report. I beg your pardon. Orders.
We have order 241, market landing, market landing appropriation.
Motion to continue to March 8th.
Second.
Any debate? Roll call.
March 8th. Thank you. Roll call on order 241 to go to March 8th. Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tantar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Endeavor came back.
Oh.
You're right. Counsel Ragman?
Yes. If Clerk Jones, if you could contact Counsel Devlin, that's.
I would be happy.
I set that into motion. I apologize.
No.
He's back. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Onto ordinances.
Ordinance 69. Give me one second. Ordinance 69 is an ordinance to amend the code under section 6.5 regarding definitions for barrier beach redevelopment. It amends a couple of different sections, 28, 36, and it's jointly submitted by councilors Khan and Shan.
Yes, motion to refer to planning and development?
Second.
Counselor Khan has the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. Put my hand out. Thank you. First of all, I do want to thank all the residents from Plymouth Island who, who came and spoke during public comment. Definitely appreciated. And I also enjoyed kind of communicating and writing over the weekend. At the time when we thought we had, I think, like I said, I, I was one of the sponsors for ordinance 69 and didn't realize that ordinance 71 was also going to be in the packet since we normally don't see our packets till Friday. So didn't realize that those, both of those things were going to be coming in. Just so people know, I am a counselor at large. So even though I don't live on Plum Island, I am a counselor at large that kind of looks at the kind of citywide issues. Just to give some context and almost, I feel like almost procedurally as well as a little bit of an education on how things kind of get vetted and brought into city council. It seemed like there was some confusion on that. So forgive me if I go on a little bit, but I want to really explain kind of how this came about and why did this come from, originate from me and in terms of my co-sponsor. So initially, I would first want to tell people that there are certain kind of authorizing entities throughout the city. So city council will make the laws and then we will have certain agencies that actually have to execute them and make them work and apply them. And that comes from permitting, that comes whether it's from licensing, that comes from enforcement of fees. And one of the things that I actually find really rewarding that we're going through right now, that's kind of dictated by the city's charter, is a review of all of our current code of ordinances. And I'm grateful that I was selected to be one of the city councilors that's actually sitting on that committee that consists of two other city councilors as well as some folks appointed by the mayor. One of the things that that effort is doing is it's allowing us to go chapter by chapter. And obviously, we're really focusing on things that just need to be updated that are kind of more considered non-substantial, things that are like state reference codes that may no longer apply, updating maybe antiquated language. But one of the other things we're doing is we're taking specific sections and we're sending them along to the entities that end up enforcing them and almost kind of a check-in to find out, are the processes working? What is happening maybe with some of the things that we may have written about eight years ago, 10 years ago? This effort hasn't been done in a long time. And it's actually listed in our charter to be done on every year that ends with a five or a zero. But for us, it's been, I've heard, over 10 years. So one of the things that came out of this is actually vetting one of the chapters, chapter 6.5 on environment. And there's a section on the wetlands, Article 2. And what I had done is I'd actually taken different portions from the different chapters and sent them over to those authorizing agencies that work with the commissions on enforcement. One of the things that came up with the Conservation Commission, as well as our Conservation Administrator, was talking about a specific definition on redevelopment. And that definition on redevelopment is something that from a perspective from the Conservation Commission is one that has been really hard to, to control with permitting. And the issue and the problem that was identified is that many of these were flagged to be problematic given the, the kind of ecological systems there. So what you see, and you'll see in this definition, and you know, we're sending this to planning and development. And without going too much in detail, one of the things that the beauty of actually, you know, sending these ordinances into committee is that, that is where the process starts for the communication, for the engagement of the public. Because otherwise, I didn't know, I don't regularly talk to the Conservation Administrator, or I don't attend all the Conservation Commission meetings to see how their permitting has been going for Plum Island residences. And because of that, there's issues or situations that have, they've been tackling and grappling with that has led to this frustration. And as a result, this is the way we as councilors can help bring that conversation, not only in the public purview, but we also allow maybe sections in our code that can be reviewed more carefully, can be looked at since it's been, you know, over eight years for this specific section where a lot of things have changed. And this is the one thing the Conservation Commission deals with regularly. And so I encourage all my fellow councilors to let this go to the Planning and Development Committee to really hone in on what is the specific problem. And right now, again, it has to do with the spreading of the lots and those lots now creating detrimental impacts on the ecological wetland situations or the water moisture that creates flooding and neighborhood flooding in other locations. So this is the problem they're trying to address. Is it the best way in terms of what's proposed in the ordinance? We don't know. This is the conversation. This is the dialogue that we have with the public, with those who are actually the builders, with those who do the permitting. And I had great conversations and actually excellent ideas over the weekend when I talked to a lot of people who do projects out on Plum Island. And they came up with like, hey, not only this section, you know, but maybe the way to address the problem is to look at the FEMA flood zones again and look and see how that's changed in the last 10 years. So to me, this is really the beauty of looking at all these scenarios and these situations and problematic areas, having an open, transparent dialogue about it. And the one thing I heard in public comment is, why now? So if you hear things happening at a snail's pace, trust me, the city, we've had short-term rentals kind of on our, on our docket for the last year. So it's not like we move fast. And especially when it comes to situations in zoning or in our code of ordinances, you know, we really take our time. So in terms of like when I'm hoping to address this, there's no timeframe that, oh, we want to get this done by like summer or fall even. The main thing is getting the dialogue, getting the right people together and actually trying to hone in on what the situation is to those agencies that really have to authorize and permit on a regular basis. So I encourage my fellow councilors, I appreciate the leeway and being able to give some of the context here. And I hope we could send it to committee and have a more transparent dialogue that really involves all the appropriate people that deal with this regularly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Z is hand up next, but Counsel Shan is a co-sponsor. So I've been rifling through the rules. I think I have to recognize Counsel Shan next.
Thank you, Council President. So I just, I can't speak to, as well as Counsel Khan did, but I will say as Chair of Planning and Development, we have had the opportunity to hear from many of the reappointments to the Conservation Commission lately and the ZBA, but specifically the Conservation Commission. We know that there are concerns about Plum Island. And I was going to defer to staff, the Conservation Administrator regarding this need. So it will be in Planning and Development, assuming we can get it there tonight. And as Counsel Khan did say, this will be there for a while and we will have it with a public discourse and public comment anytime we discuss this topic. And that's where, to her point, this is where we're going to have the conversation. So fear not for the folks on Plum Island. This is just a conversation we're going to have in the committee. So that's all I'll say. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Counselor Z is next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have been the Ward 1 City Councilor for five years now. This is my sixth year. And I consider myself to be the subject matter expert on this on the city council. And I didn't become the subject matter expert on it on the council overnight. It's, it's a lot of attendance of the School of Hard Knocks and constant meetings of the MRBA. A lot of the residents you heard speak tonight, I've sat in their living room. I've sat at their kitchen table. I have grieved with them as they have lost a lot in front of their homes, particularly those on reservation terraces and others I've simply knocked on their door and spoke to them. So I thought a lot about what I wanted to say tonight, and I do have a bit to say. So you'll have to bear with me. The first thing I need to do is give you some perspective on the attitude of a Plum Island resident and why you heard the public comment that you heard tonight. There is a longstanding feeling on Plum Island that they are treated as second-class residents and that they don't get the same respect as residents on the mainland. I have been hearing that at the front door every year I have knocked on doors. There's this sense that there's supposed to be some apology from those who live on Plum Island simply for existing, or that every need they may have that requires an expenditure of funds is something that they should simply have to beg for or be apologetic because they need it. There's also some misapprehension or misunderstanding that somehow there's considerable money pouring into Plum Island from the city, or that it's creating an undue balance or need in terms of funds as opposed to the rest of the city. That's not the case. You know, you look at some recent expenditures, the sandbags, those were paid for out of the Plum Island Sewer Settlement Fund. That's my dedicated for Plum Island, not general fund money. You look at the recent larger expenditure on replacing the VAC pumps that are at Oga Way that serve the island that too came out of the water sewer settlement. In my six years, I had to go back and really think about what actual general fund money has been going to Plum Island. So you need to have that perspective to understand the frustration. So you, you need to have that perspective to understand the frustration that Plum Island residents experience on a daily basis. And as their representative, as their most direct representative, I am absolutely going to be behind them 150%. I will never, I just, you know, their frustration is my frustration because I'm with them at these meetings. I'm with them every step along the way. And I think you need to understand that they're not interested in being used as a punching bag or for multiple ordinances to come in all at the same time, all targeting them. I am happy that Ordinance 71 has been withdrawn, but I need to speak further about Ordinance 69. So let me just finish this discussion about sort of the attitude. Let me tell you or paint you the picture of some of the residents on Plum Island. When I came on, if you lived on reservation terrace, you had hundreds of feet of beach in front of your home. And then you watch a jetty get redone for the benefit of the navigation channel, for the benefit of boaters. And before you know it, that jetty is the direct cause of the loss of beach in front of your home. Now you have no beach in front of your home or eroding beach, and now you find yourself in 2020, 21 with no beach. You spend years, years, literally years, all of the years I've been on the council, begging for proactive action, begging for somebody to take it seriously and to get ahead of it rather than waiting until it becomes a disaster. You open your own wallet and you pay for things like sand nourishment. You go out there and you use your own hands and a shovel to, to dig and put beach grass into the, into the dune in an effort to help. You then watch the jetty continue, which by the way, keep in mind, the jetty is a human intervention itself. It is not a naturally occurring phenomenon. Then COVID hits, that hits everybody. Then you get battered by multiple Nor'easters and you watch what little is left of the dune get destroyed. And then you wake up one morning and you have your own city council, rather than supporting or helping you during this time, basically attempting to beat you into submission further. So that kind of gives you some perspective. Now let me give you another perspective on the basin side of the island. Okay, that's the other side of the island. These folks are not experiencing any major erosion issues. You know, they're just simply living their lives. They've got, they've got their homes. They may have minor erosion here or there, but no catastrophic erosion like being faced on reservation terrace. Maybe they live in a family home, are trying to improve it for their own use. You heard some of those stories tonight. And so you're, you're sort of plugging along and there's nothing major happening to you. And then all of a sudden you find that you too are caught up in these proposals, that you sort of had no idea that were coming up. So that kind of gives you two different stories. There are thousands of stories on the island. You heard some of them tonight, maybe you got some of those emails. But I felt it important to sort of explain where people are coming from, especially those that are frustrated because they have a right to be frustrated and they have a right not to have to apologize for being frustrated, to have to fight this or any other one of the multitude of different organizations, agencies, federal bodies, state bodies, and now city bodies as well. From a process perspective, you know, it is a bit difficult to accept that, you know, I, I was not contacted about this and, and made any sort of awareness about that this was coming in or that this was under consideration. But actually, more important to me, I spoke to probably several hundred residents over the past 72 hours. I couldn't find a single resident that had been contacted either. So this concept that, you know, we're going to use an ordinance to quote, "start a conversation," is a bit hard. Shouldn't there be some conversation that goes into it? I'm glad that the Planning Board and the Zoning Board and the Conservation are having a conversation. Well, guess what? They don't live on the island, many of them. Some of them do. There's one person on the Conservation Commission. So what about the residents? What about those that will be impacted by the proposal? Why wasn't, why weren't any of them contacted? You also need to understand that Plum Island's not, you know, for the same reason some think that Plum Island should be treated differently than the rest of the city. There is actually a different world out there in terms of process. A central core theme of that is the Merrimack River Beach Alliance, which everybody just talks about in passing. It shows up here and there in the mayor's update. That's a, that, that is a core nucleus for activity and, and things don't just happen the same way. And that's the benefit of having a ward council who actually understands how things get done on the island. And one of the biggest parts of the MRBA is the fact that Plum Island's not one municipality. It's two municipalities at least that we're talking about here, and that'd be Newbury and Newburyport. And that's why you've got a couple of Newbury residents interested as well, because they understand that there's a nexus between these two things and the collaboration has proved to be valuable.
I wanted to give you a long rope, but I just speak to the motion.
Sure. So I'm going to just have one, one last comment. I'll get to the merits and why this should not be referred. The last thing I need to say on process is the counselor, one of the counselors who sponsored this indicated this is an outgrowth of the Ordinance Recodification Committee. I want to read to you a quick sentence from the charter. "The purpose of the Ordinance Recodification Committee shall provide for review to be made of this ordinances of the city for the purposes of repairing a proposed revision or recodification of them, quote, 'without substantive change.'" "The ordinance recodification is not a vehicle for reconsidering the entire ordinance and in fact rewriting effectively some of the zoning that exists out on Plum Island." So there seems to be a misunderstanding of what that committee's purpose is, and this, this is an outgrowth of that. All right, why should we not send this to committee? Okay, so Ordinance 71, I had a lengthy list. I have a lengthy list for 69 as well. Let's be clear about what this would do. This would immediately, if passed, would reduce the footprint expansion allowability from 20% to 0%. It would also start counting decks as part of the footprint where they previously were not considered. This is absolutely a double whammy. So why should you not send it to committee, especially if you're thinking to yourself, well, this guy's just the Ward 1 representative, all he cares about is Plum Island. 0% is a crucial number. I think it creates a cogent argument that this ordinance amounts to a regulatory taking by the city and you will be opening up the entire city to, to legal action unnecessarily, and that would affect all residents. There is no room in this ordinance for any relief. So if this goes and it passes, there's no room to go and ask anybody, any board, any commission for relief. Number three, it's bad policy. One of the core policies, sort of structures or ideas on Plum Island is that raising structures is a good idea. Raising structures to get out of a flood, flood plain has been a longstanding goal of many areas. Why would you make it harder for people to raise their homes? Raising a home almost certainly in most cases will require changes to the footprint to accommodate other things like stairs, decks for landings to access the first floor. And ironically, the V and the AO FEMA zones, which this would impact most, are the ones where you'd like to see homes raised more than any. Fourth, you're going to catch all kinds of, and create all kinds of unintended consequences. The expansion, the, the changing to 0% means one square foot is going to trigger this ordinance. A simple vestibule, a mudroom, anything, everything, again, opening the city to more legal ramifications. The entire section is extremely suspect. I can't understand why zoning-type matters are handled in a general ordinance section. And finally, this is not the right time during COVID to be putting this in. And the concept that this could stay in committee for several months is probably not comforting to residents at all who don't want to spend the next six months of their lives fighting this. This is a terrible place to start a conversation. If you want to learn about Plum Island, set aside four to six years and come and talk to me and I'll teach you everything I've learned in that time. Come to MRBA meetings, talk to residents and understand the challenges they're facing. This is the wrong proposal at the wrong time. It doesn't need to go to committee. It serves no public purpose to have the conversation. And I'm asking, I would ask the sponsor to withdraw the motion and please allow me to make the motion to receive and file so we can move on and come back to this, perhaps at a time when it's better, or frankly, perhaps never, if cooler heads prevail and we realize that this is not a positive proposal or place to start a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to sponsor, Counselor Khan.
Thank you, Council President. My head is quite cool. So I, I'm definitely not coming at this in, in passion or anything and, and I kind of disagree. I, I have to say, as, as our, our role as city counselors is that we could, we rewrite laws. We actually, the, the code of ordinances is actually all generated by city counselors, if I'm not mistaken. And so if an effort is being done where we are actually going line by line and actually having a, a conversation and a dialogue and actually checking in on, on things that we wrote, I, I think that's actually all very well and done by, by this body here. And every single person should be feeling empowered to do that. The other aspect I want to say, the reason I, I do want to say, go to committee, and I think for anyone who's been on the city council, you know that the way an ordinance comes into committee isn't how it actually ends up coming out of committee. So that's an important thing. And I've only been on the council, this is my third year, finished my third year, so this is my fourth year. I've seen that happen quite a bit where, where something comes in one way. I mean, I think short-term rentals is one thing, where you actually, in the conversation in committee, can see ways that you actually end up with a better product than what went in. And already, like I mentioned earlier, the conversations I've had, and I actually have friends that live on Plum Island. So, and I actually did canvas there and went to almost every home on, or throughout the island. And so I, I'm, I'm aware of, of the situation and I have, like I said, people that I reach out to. So this is not out of ignorance. It's actually through kind of, again, talking to what our laws are doing and what's currently written and maybe how it could be improved. And that's one of the things through the conversations that I've been having leading up to this is that there are areas, just of how, just because of how it came in, doesn't mean that that's the best way. And already, I, I know areas that I think that needs to be modified, just almost from just this little dialogue I had over the weekend. So I, I really, I, I ask everyone to not do a disservice to really, again, I go back to the, the intent of the law and the, the people that are enforcing the law and those that are actually trying to do the permitting based on what we have decided or what we have dictated and what we could do to improve. And like I said, things could even come out better and actually be a little bit more encompassing than almost how it seems restrictive. So keep that in mind too. There's a lot that we can learn here and make better. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors. Counselor Lane.
Hi, thank you. I'm actually, I, I'm in support of the Ward 1 Council. You know, I want to look at it and I've been in contact with a lot of going through.
Yeah, you're, you're breaking up, Counselor.
Can you hear me?
You're, you're a bit spotty, but, but try to get through.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You got me?
Yep.
Okay. So, you know, I've been in contact with a lot of the Plum Island residents. You know, if you didn't hear, I'm, I'm in support of the, the Ward 1 Councilor and then not passing this and receiving file. I put myself on a very human level in their shoes. I think there's a lot of correlation between what Ward 6 goes through and what Ward 1 goes through, being on the outskirts. It just happens that way. I don't know why, but I put myself in their shoes. And if I wake up and I see these two ordinances after, I'm worried about losing my house into the ocean. It's hurtful. Like I'd be hurt by that, quite frankly. I don't think it does any good and I don't like the way this has come in. There wasn't a whole lot of conversation with the residents down there. I've been inundated with phone calls all weekend because I know a lot of people out there. And, and the resounding theme is no, like, what is this? It confused me. I had to go through it and I can't see the reasoning in starting this conversation at this time when people are struggling. I have a really hard time pushing that through. For that reason alone, I'm, I'm not in support of this going to a committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Other counselors. I'm not seeing any other hands. Oh, no, Counselor Tontor.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, I, I have as a general rule that I do not vote in opposition to sending any measure to committee. And the reason is I, I have a position that we should maximize debate. I've had a couple of things, measures that were not sent to committee by the council as a whole. And I, I think the council would have benefited from more discussion. However, I, I think this measure does merit a little more discussion right here before we send it to committee. Because I, what I am hearing, and I actually heard this in, in some of the public comments, what I've heard is that the Plum Island overlay district is not currently being enforced. And that perhaps what should happen first is that should be enforced. What I heard from the sponsoring counselor is that the people who would do the enforcement are saying that there is a problem in the language, that, that both on CONCOM and, and, and and, and other city departments who are trying to enforce this, that they find the language to be vague and, and they can't work with it. So there is a correspondence, there's a problem, all right? And there's a problem that needs to be fixed. Now, what we have before us may not be the fix. And I think the sponsoring counselor mentioned as such, it may not be the fix. Nevertheless, it seems to be a problem. And, and I don't see why we would not refer it to committee and try to search for a mutually acceptable solution to what is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other counselors that haven't spoken yet. Counselor McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. I too would like to, typically like to see things go to committee. However, in this case, and, and I think that the intent here was what was pure in so much that we want to have a clean, concise type of process and language that can be enforced. However, I, I think in this particular case, it has unintended consequences to move it quickly into, in committee. Personally, I'd like to see it be reworked a little bit and then come back with some more specifics, maybe outside of committee. And that unintended consequences, in, in many ways, it puts a freeze where people are right now. We have boards that, you know, this will be the first quote-unquote "public reading" of this and it's introduced to the public. And some boards inconsistently apply, when they're the first public reading, they, they interpret the rule as being going, going into place. And they don't necessarily comply with what's on the books now, but what is proposed. And in, in a market like that we have right now and the conditions we have, moving this into committee to debate it and to have, let's say, a two or three month or a longer type of debate that might be needed here, we've, we've unintentionally put a freeze on activity that could happen now that wouldn't be affected by this, but just because there's something pending, pending has this. So I, I, I'm not going to vote for moving this to committee. Not to say that I don't think that we should always strive to have a cleaner language, but I, I just don't think at this time, the, the timing is right for us to be able to move that in. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors. Counselor Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll, I'll have to say that I, I stand in favor of it going to, to committee. I don't know of any other mechanism where we can't begin the, the dialogue and the understanding. I think that the hue and cry that came up from over those hundred people that were out there listening tonight certainly shows us that we need to have a dialogue around all of this. But whether or not it goes into committee, I mean, that's what, that's what we do. We, we've, we, we bring these issues forward and that's our, that's, that's how we do it. I don't understand how else we do go about it. We, we just go, oh, never mind, I didn't really mean it. And then just kind of let it sit there. I'm, I understand the potential for, you know, misinterpretation or people, you know, being concerned about how to move forward from this point forward, but that's, that's not the intent. I, I read through this, I see what, what is being said. And I see that, you know, we're trying to, to be aligned. It deserves discussion. And having, having made suggestions that items go to committee and not have them go to committee is, is very, is very frustrating. And that is, that is clearly part of our, our structure and I believe that we should move it forward and put it into committee.
Thank you. Counselor Devlin is next.
Yes, thank you. My problem with letting it go to committee is, is in my memory, we've had two in my five years on the council that, or one that, that was, that was voted not to go to committee. And it had, it was about the PEC and the employee, public employees' health insurance. And we had a similar turnout for people who were saying that when these things go into committee, you know, it causes them great consternation and, and worry. And, and that's what we were hearing from those people. I actually don't think that was, I don't, I don't, actually, let me rephrase that. I know that was not the intention of the two counselors. That was not what they were trying to do, but that is what happened. And, and there are other mechanisms for us to hear this. If, if this were me and I had submitted this with good intentions, I would think about withdrawing it because you can put a communication in from the committee. And, and, and you can hear, here are some of the, here's what we learned in reviewing the ordinances and speaking to the various agencies that enforce the ordinances. And, and here's, you know, these are some discussion points we'd like to have in Planning and Development. That then takes away the immediate threat. Someone mentioned short-term rentals. One of the first meetings in licensing and permits, someone raised their hand and said, have you ever had an ordinance that came in here that didn't get passed? And in my five years, I couldn't remember it. And this, you can't run away from the language of this. This does change the ordinance and makes it more restrictive to do things with your home on Plum Island. And again, the intention definitely was not to unnerve people and make them, you know, uncertain about what they can do with their homes. But there are other ways that we can accomplish this. And I think we can do it in a more harmonious mechanism and a more harmonious way. So with all of that said, I won't be voting for it to go into committee. But I hope the sponsors do understand. I think I understand where you're coming from and I just think there's another mechanism that we could do that. And I've never had that many people show up, other than for the Public Employees Health Commission, where we had, I think, 120 people in the city council chambers. This is an impactful thing and I think we should take note of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Connell is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be brief. I will vote in favor of sending this to the committee. We never did resolve since people have referred to the questions about the PEC, the issues that were extended at the time when that proposal disappeared. And the reason we've never addressed is because we never had a mechanism. We never had a forum to have that open discussion. One of the constraints that we live with is the result of the open meeting laws. We have a structure here and that structure is designed to give us an opportunity to have an open, public discussion in full view of the community. Absent, this year in particular, the ability to meet face-to-face with people, I think that that committee structure is particularly valuable. What are we afraid we are going to learn by talking about it? The Ward One Counselor referred to the amount of time and I know he does spend issues related to Plum Island. It's, let me point out, you know, in the early 2000s, when the Plum Island Work Group was working and finally designing and contracting with and constructing the water and sewer system, I spent a period of time in six, I'm sorry, five meetings. And then there's a sixth one that was much smaller at Peter Hall, listening to what people had learned or trying to answer their questions if they hadn't had them answered previously about the way in which the system was going to be built and reached its final approvals and construction. Out of that came a report and the report stated that the big problem with the working group was that it worked kind of quietly and out of sight. And over a long period of time, people got tired of attending. Some people who spoke tonight actually did attend some of those meetings and I respect them for having stuck with it. But I don't think it's reasonable for us to expect people to attend all these meetings. If we have a public process that is open to them, it's an opportunity for them to offer input that perhaps they might not have an opportunity to offer outside of that committee process. So I strongly urge you, let's not put our heads in the sand, no pun intended, or maybe somewhat intended. Let's look at the issues that the counselors have brought forward, see if they make sense. If they don't, is there a better way, a different way to address the issues that they've uncovered? And if so, let's explore them. I don't think we should turn away from a conversation just because it's difficult. I will vote in favor of the referral. I urge you to do the same.
Thank you. Before I go back to Counselors Zed and then Con, any other counselors that haven't spoken yet? Under our rules, they get preference. I'm not seeing any. Counselor Zed, you took your hand down, did you?
Yeah, I yield for the moment. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Wallace has not spoken yet.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I came into this thinking I would refer it to committee because I do agree that we need to vet things, have the discussion. And I agree with the at-large counselor, Counselor Devlin, that, you know, the intention of the sponsors was not any sort of, you know, ill will or whatnot. But listening to the residents, they've been through a lot and it is emotionally draining for them. It is a little concerning to me that the ward counselor was not contacted. You know, being a ward counselor myself, I would have liked to have, you know, seen that. But I also refer to the ward counselor, you know, he knows his residents. He knows the geography. He knows, you know, what's working for them and what isn't. So in this particular case, I will vote to not send it to committee.
Thank you. Other counselors that haven't spoken yet? Back to Counselor Con.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I guess I didn't realize this was going to be such a, I guess I didn't think this was not going to go to committee. So I'm really, I guess, just a little frustrated because, like I said, there's a lot of area that this could be improved in a good way. And I, and already, like I said, in conversations, there's ways, and we know this, that the amendments can actually, you know, if we take out the 20%, which I think is the problem, I also heard how the FEMA zones can actually be eliminated to be a little bit more allowance and try to still solve the problem. In terms of me going and reworking this though, and here's the problem with that. And I really appreciate what was stated by the other counselor at large, is that we do have this, you know, I want to work with everyone else who's involved in this, meaning I want to bring administration. I want to have other counselors. I know the counselor from Ward One. At least I was told by administration that there are some of these issues that were brought up and they know about the Plum Island Overlay District kind of changes coming up. And I didn't want to put them in a, you know, to be honest, in a bad situation to have to sponsor something like this. But again, I welcome the Ward One's counselors, you know, able to get the community up and could get the community in the conversation. There's going to be things in wards that will be a little sticky for the board counselor to address and I understand that. So that's why, being a counselor at large, I feel like that's something that, you know, I don't mind taking on. I don't mind taking the beating that might happen, you know. And a part of it, again, I think it's the education to the residents because a lot of the comments stated during public comment, I could tell there was a little misunderstanding and not a well interpretation of what this was really accomplishing. It was very clear to me because after, it's not easy. We all know that. We read these zoning sections and they're like Greek in some situations and you're so grateful. It's another agency having to deal with it. But in some of these, because of looking at the context, looking at all the information around it, I could tell that it's not as understood by some of the residents in terms of what is trying to be accomplished. I also think that there's also not an appreciation of the work we do in committee by bringing in the experts, bringing in the right people and having a useful dialogue, especially on something that was done originally in 2001. A lot of changes, we all know wetlands changed. We all know FEMA flood zones have changed. This is going to be coming back, one way or another. By just not letting it go into committee now, we're like saying, okay, we aren't going to literally ignore it, but we can't ignore it. And that's my problem. It's time to talk. And like I said, it doesn't have to be quickly. We could take our time. And this is a perfect way, again, transparency, get all the issues out there, have the engagement. Not supposed to be stressful. It really isn't. But what's going to happen is eventually there's going to be mandates coming down from the state level already that I'm starting to see, working, going to some of the MMA sessions and the Resiliency Presentation that was done. There are going to be some situations that are going to have to be addressed and tightened up and in some cases loosened based on the situation of what we're seeing. So again, I will still be supporting this going into committee and I guess we'll see how the vote goes. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Back to Counselor Zed.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to state three things. Number one is, part of the decision about sending something to committee is, you know, whether you feel that, you know, the sponsors or the proposal has created or shown you that there is an issue. Now, the only thing that's really been discussed here is that some of the boards are expressing some frustration. But the frustration with what? With the issue of, you know, they're maybe in a position where they're permitting something that they otherwise would not want to? In my experience, typically, issues relating to zoning come from residents. Residents complaining that next door to them or down the street from them, something was permitted that they don't like. And they ask the question, usually of their ward counselor, why was this allowed? I'm not getting those calls. I'm not getting them on Plum Island. What I am getting is, why is nobody coming down here to fix the beach? Why is nobody helping us with the jetty? I can articulate a resident-driven issue on the beach and on the jetty. So, you know, I think that there's a difference there. We have dealt with other zoning issues. But usually the genesis of those comes from residents complaining about things happening in their neighborhood. And that's simply not my experience. And I am qualified to speak on that because I'm usually the first people, first person somebody on Plum Island would come to for an issue like that. So there's not a lot of discussion about residents. So it's frustrating for staff or it's frustrating for boards. Okay, it's not that we shouldn't listen to that. But it seems like that's being taken at a higher level than what the residents, several of them, many of them told you by email and by speaking today. Number two is, one counselor stated, you know, what do we have to lose? Well, I think that's a pretty easy thing to say when business, your head on the chopping block. So, you know, it's not your property. It's not your stress. So what's the big deal, right? We're just going to have six months of committee meetings on this. And these folks are going to have to stay engaged to let you know that they still don't want to lose their property rights after six months, as though that's something that's going to change. And lastly, we are a deliberative body, you know, we are not a working group here on the city council. And I do think that there should be some standard applied. And part of that is part of the assessment you do when you send something to committee. Has an issue been identified that is worth the council's time to take up? And is the proposal a good starting point for that conversation? And I've made my argument for why it's not. But this concept that the council is going to be the working group to rewrite an ordinance that you've clearly heard from residents is not acceptable to them in this current format, isn't fair to residents and it's not fair to counselors either. So, you know, if you want to bring in the administration, if you want to bring in staff, if you want to bring in residents, that's part of putting together proposals. So again, I don't, you know, it just, you're having the conversation on the backs of residents. And that's probably my biggest issue with this, is that's not the right way and it's not fair to do it. And, you know, other areas of the city do not experience this treatment. So no one ever brought in an ordinance saying that Waterfront West was not, you know, was not something that could be, could be developed, that nobody would even think of that as bringing that in as an ordinance. No one would ever think of saying to residents on Phillips Drive where they're having drainage issue, you can't even add one square foot to your house. So it's an unfair standard and I'd like to, I'd like to move the question.
Is that a motion? Because if there's no
Okay. What was that motion?
All right, it's roll call. Need a two-thirds supermajority.
So what was the motion? It's not to refer to
To call a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got you. Roll call on calling a question. Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Just to confirm, this is calling the question, correct?
That's correct. It puts the question to a roll call.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Ogden?
Yes.
That motion passed unanimously.
All right, so we go directly without any further debate to the underlying motion, which is a motion to refer to planning and development.
By roll call. Here we go. Okay, motion to refer to planning and development this ordinance. Counselor Con?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
And Counselor Ogden?
Yes.
Motion passes six to five. Measure is sent to planning and development.
Next.
Next, we have Ordinance Seventy, which is sponsored by the Council President. And it's to propose to voters certain minor amendments to the city charters, such as the definitions in Section 1.7, exercise of powers in Section 2-6, and certain other changes to Section 2-9 and Section 3-1.
I'd entertain, this actually came out of committee and I could discuss it at general government report. Would I entertain a motion to continue to a date certain?
So moved, so a motion to move to a date considered
March 8 is our
March 8, okay, to March 8.
Second.
Okay, any discussion of that?
Why?
Yeah, you can discuss.
No, I'm asking why? Why do we want to motion it to a date certain?
There's no reason to send it back to committee because it originated in committee, but you can't act on it on the same night. So I figured we would keep it at the full council and decide whether the full council wants to adopt it or not. You could debate it tonight. So you could vote against the motion to continue and debate its merits, I guess, or you could refer it to a committee. But again, it came out of a committee. And just to clarify what this is for the public, this is a, this is an ordinance. I'm sorry, yeah, it's an ordinance. I thought it was an order, but it's an ordinance. That it needs the, it needs the concurrence of the mayor. And what it does is it puts before the voters at the fall election miscellaneous amendments to the charter. It's the only way we can change the charter that I know of. And, you know, it's up to the council now. We went through it at the General Government Committee. And again, I can discuss later on. But, you know, it's time for the full council to discuss. Counselor Connell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I support deferring on this. We have, it's already been a fairly lengthy discussion tonight on a couple of items that are now just referred to committee. And we have obviously at least one substantial debate ahead tonight. There are people looking over our shoulders, waiting to hear what that discussion involves. This particular proposal is quite technical in nature and it appears to me, the silence of counselors at this particular moment suggests that the majority of the attention that counselors have spent in preparation for this meeting was on other items. And I think deferring it to a future date, in this case, does not harm the issue. But it does give the counselors time to understand what this proposal means and prepare to discuss it at that future date.
Thank you. Other councilors on the motion to continue to our next regular meeting of March 8? Roll call.
Roll call on moving Ordinance Seventy to March 8. Counselor Con?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Ogden. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's it for this. This is Ordinance Seventy-one. Again, it's withdrawn. It's not going forward tonight. Committee items. Ad hoc committee on economic development, nothing to report. Ad hoc committee on market landing and park expansion and committee the whole on that one for part of it. That's the committee that we set up to handle the RFP. And you heard from the mayor and her report, we are going to consider at our next meeting, March 8, whether to award the contract to Sasaki. But I just wanted to state on the record that we had 14 bidders and Sasaki scored the highest on the written test in the interviews. And then they were the sixth lowest bidder, actually. And the second highest scoring firm, you know, a very well-thought-of firm, you know, their dollar bid You know, their dollar bid was more than twice as much. So it seems to us that we really lucked out with Sasaki, but we will discuss it next meeting. Chair Z, budget and finance.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to start off by making a motion to receive and file order number 229, disposition and funding for rehabilitation of the former Brown School Planning and Development Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Go ahead, Chair.
So this, you know, this is probably pretty well known, but as it just, as it relates to a committee report, the committee has met several times on this. The most recent one, and this will be a recurring theme throughout these three related matters, was on February 11th. And that was the one during which there was, you know, discussion about this order most recently and specifically motions. Two motions were made. One was to remove from budget and finance with a recommendation to receive and file on committee. That was passed by a vote of three to zero roll call in budget and finance. I also want to state, I don't know how the planning and development chair would like to handle too, but these also came out of planning and development. And there was a similar, the same motion made in planning and development and that passed that committee three to zero. This was the proposal that provided for a bonding amount against the Brown School as well as the utilization of the Kelly School proceeds. It also called for purchase of the land at 57 Low Street as part of that bond and to assign it to parks, just for the benefit of the public, for those who did not attend the committee meeting. Receive and file, as you may now know, essentially means that the proposal falls off the table and is no longer under consideration.
Other counselors. We're gonna roll call.
The roll call receiving file order 229. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Argon.
Yes.
Matters received and filed.
The next matter, Mr. President, is communication 281. I'd like to make the same motion to receive and file. That is the information request for 57 Low Street, planning and development. This was also discussed at that same February 11th meeting. And this was a memo from Counselor Wallace, Ward four, requesting information relating to Low Street. Motions were made in both budget and finance and planning and development to recommend receiving file, and it received a three zero roll call vote in each. The, the memo's author did note that one of the items was not completed in there. That was the, that was the completion of the wetlands delineation. I may be using incorrect terminology, but the completion of that process. But nonetheless, this was just a communication and the, the recommendation.
Other counselors debate. Roll call.
Roll call on communication 281, receiving file. Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Argon.
Yes.
Matter received and filed.
Okay, Mr. President, I next have number order 214. I will, with your, with your latitude, I will simply provide a committee report as the committees rendered no recommendation on this. And then I will allow, you know, if you would like to take motions from others, is that permissible?
Yes.
I know it's a little odd with no motion on the floor, but there was no recommendation from the committee.
And it's already out. So.
It is.
Counselor Tontar.
Yes, I would like to move to delay to time definite. And that time definite would be a special meeting on February 25th, Thursday, February 25th.
Second.
President's discretion.
Okay. That's debatable, but let's go back to Counselor Z. Did you want to make?
Well, you can tell me if you'd like the committee report now. It's up to you.
Go ahead and give us the committee, what happened on committee and we'll take up the motion.
So again, this, this was, this was discussed multiple times over a variety of different meetings. It was referred both to budget and finance as well as planning and development as well as committee of the whole. But the actions that were taken were discussed at the February 11th meeting, the same one that I have been referring to. I will just give you a rundown of the motions that were made so that you can understand how we arrived here. So in budget and finance, there was a motion to approve. It received no second in planning and development. The same motion was made, it to receive no second. There was a motion to deny in planning and development that received no second. And then there was a planning and development motion to send to council without recommendation. That was ultimately approved by planning and development two to one. Budget and finance with the same motion, it failed with a vote of one to two. Upon a reconsideration, with the reconsideration in budget and finance being voted three zero, we voted again on the, on the motion to send to the council without recommendation and that in that second vote passed three to zero. And that is how order number 214 lands back here at the council without a recommendation. And it was not amended in any way in committee. So the, what you see in the packet today is how it was, it was presented to the council when it first came in. I hope that gives some information.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to continue to Thursday, the 25th.
Mr. President, I did not catch the second on that motion by Counselor Tontar.
Counselor Vogel.
Thank you.
Counselor Tontar, speak to the motion.
Yeah, please. As the mayor mentioned, in her update, there has been considerable negotiation discussion between the mayor and the council president that reflects to some degree, the, the logjam that, that the council finds itself on this issue. And there has been a potential resolution that entails different language in, in order to 14. I, I don't, I, I would prefer not to get into the substance of that. The reason I would like it delayed is so that the public has the opportunity to review the changes over the next few days before the council acts on it. It would also provide counselors the opportunity to have a little more time. I just got this, this afternoon, in the late afternoon. And I think it would, we really should delay this until Thursday. So we all have a chance to digest it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Z is next.
At first comment is just as a matter of, of just simple logistics, budget and finance has a meeting at 6:30. That is a standing meeting of the budget and finance committee. I have worked hard to put together a schedule and posted it for the whole year. And with all due respect, you know, I don't really appreciate getting run over for something that has been quote, worked on for years. And the best that we can offer the public are 11th hour amendments on the floor now apparently and delaying by two days as though after two plus years of discussion, several months of this being in committee. I mean, we talk, we just had a lengthy discussion about our process. How can anybody look at this and be proud of this? I'm not. I was a bit incredulous, as most folks know, during the committee meeting that we would refer something to ourselves. That was, that was to refer to two committees and the committee of the whole to ourselves with no recommendation. I was joking around myself, saying, I hope those folks on the 22nd are smarter than we are in, in committee. Turns out we're the same people. So I'm frustrated by this. I, I don't see how it serves, how it has served or how this, this, you know, I just, I can't get over it that this is just, you know, again, more terrible process on, on top of terrible process. And even to ask members, you know, so I can certainly agree that getting something at 5:50 PM or whatever time it was that we received it tonight substantive, by the way, substantive amendments. Is it's, it's really, it's, it's somewhat unbelievable. And I wasn't really frankly, coming into this meeting to hear those because, you know, if they're just, they're last minute and, you know, not well thought out. And I'm, I'm just, I'm expressing my frustration. So I will oppose. And if anybody wants to, I'm more than ready to debate this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vogel is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that everybody here shares that same frustration that was just expressed by the Ward one counselor. Really to have a substantive item dropped on us late in the afternoon before city council meeting, I don't think we have any choice. I think that there's a, you know, the, if you really want to bring out the background as to how this substantive change landed on our, in our computers at, you know, five o'clock in the afternoon, we can get into that. But I would rather just take it on its face value that it's an effort to try to bring this to a resolution where everybody is comfortable. And if you want to use the word compromised, then we can use that word. But I think that we, it deserves taking a look at. Because as we all know, we are pretty much deadlocked. And I think that the public needs to take a look at what has been offered. We need to digest it. And we need to debate that and see if we can get somewhere. So I think that the frustration is all around. And mentioning it over and over again doesn't get us out of the deadlock. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Khan is next.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just, more from a logistical perspective, given the email that we got and these documents, are these going to be, do we need to formally accept them as an amendment? And then we could discuss at a future date when we meet on Thursday. I guess I'm just trying to make sure that we're, that the public gets the right information in front of them as well. So.
Well, our, our normal practice, we have a special meeting, you'll get another packet and it will be posted publicly, the documents. So it'll be posted online and they, they'll be circulated to each counselor.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. You know, I, I too went, you know, I, I spent the time to go through the substantive documents and they're the same, it's the same substantive documents we started with in November that some thought were too restrictive, right? Nothing really changed. I mean, let's say it, there's a conservation restriction placed on the land. Okay, we, we already did this cycle. Right? We did this dance before, people weighed in on it. They saw what it was. They saw where the lines were drawn. Some people didn't like it. Some people liked it. There's nothing more than that. Unless there's gonna be 11th and a half hour change or, or more negotiation going on. But that's where we stand from my perspective. So I, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that there's anything we haven't already talked about in this change proposal to not have a debate tonight. But we'll see. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Shan hasn't spoken yet. Counselor Shan.
So I appreciate the person who said it came out at 5:50. And for those of us that do work late, I haven't had a chance to look at it closely, but I did see that there were, there was some wording that was different. And it does warrant having an opportunity to read through it and not try to do it tonight at 10 o'clock when we're going into a full-scale debate now, it seems. You know, I know some folks enjoy it, but you know, the, the public hasn't seen this and it's probably just appropriate to postpone this to Thursday. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Back to Counselor Z.
Well, I was, I was just thinking to myself, as, as, you know, counting on my fingers, likely this has the votes to continue to a special meeting. Maybe somebody should, should explain what the amendments are and whose amendment is this? This is from the mayor. Mayor doesn't have the power to make amendments. And maybe somebody before you continue, it could at least give the public the respect of explaining what the amendment is. And, and giving others the opportunity of at least trying to understand. I, I did read them. And, you know, how much time can you put into something when you get it late in the afternoon? But I did read them. I think somebody should own this. Because I got, I have a comment about it that I'd like to make. And, you know, I can at least explain what the documents are, but I'm not going to make the motion. So it'd be nice if somebody would do that for the benefit of the public.
Thank you. Counselor Khan.
You're muted.
I'm sure you guys like that. Yeah. I, in looking at the document, somebody said that it's the same that we've seen before. And if you look a little closely, the map is a little different. So I see a different line for the CR. And there is some differences here. So I kind of agree with the counselor for, from Ward one. If someone could kind of walk through those differences. And then we could all spend time, we could post it, have it publicly available and then reconvene on Thursday. So I'd be in support of that. I wouldn't mind walking through those differences for my colleagues on the call who thinks this is the same and we've seen it before.
Thank you. Counselor Tontar.
Yes, the, the original order, I'm sorry, yeah, order 214 was, was a pretty clean order. It just essentially said we approve purchasing the property and had no conditions, right? There were efforts to put conditions on that. And, and that, that was encapsulated the order that we just received and filed. And I, I would say the major difference is this does put restrictions on, on what had been a clean order. For one thing, it, it places a area of conservation restriction under Article 97 of the Amendments to Massachusetts Constitution on, on the wetlands. So Article 97, of course, protects those wetlands in perpetuity. And, and, and I think, you know, that's something I think the council needs to discuss. But once again, I do believe that that's a substantive change and that the public needs to see it. And especially the many people who have contacted us. And, and the councils also have to, I think, give us some thought. Yes. And, and there is a plot map that is different than had originally been proposed. And so for the same reason, I, I think it should, we should delay. I strongly urge you to delay it. Let the public have an opportunity to take a look at this.
Thank you. Counselor Devlin is next.
Yes, I'm just speaking to the, I have reviewed this. I too got it late. Luckily, I checked my, my email before the meeting. Was a little baffled and dumbfounded by it because this could have been done 10 days ago when we had our last committee meeting. We could have discussed it in committee meeting. I thought I heard some rumblings of that. So this is not something that's, I, I'm still trying to figure out who proposed it. I see Counselor Tontar's name on it, but that's from the original filing. This is an amendment. So I guess the administration is making an amendment to something. I, I'm not sure that that's possible. I'm willing, I'm ready to, this is not changing my decision on it. So you know, and, and because of somebody else's mismanagement of the process, I have to now take time out for my family on Thursday night to then, and everybody who is here listening to this debate for the last two and a half hours has to do it. We, we have got to have some respect for our time. We are volunteers. And I don't think we're deadlocked. We can all count. This is, a deadlock means you're tied. This needs eight votes. I'm not sure it's got it. And so that's not a deadlock. This is a, I'm willing to go forward because I want to get this over with. And then I prepared for it and we shouldn't, just, I'm very disappointed. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Counselor Z.
I don't want to harp on the issue, but, but for those, in a last bit effort to convince folks to vote against this motion, you know, to postpone to a date certain Thursday, the least we, the least one could do is make a motion to amend and put this amendment on the floor. It still does not exist. It's an email from the mayor. That's not a thing. If this amendment doesn't have a sponsor, then we are going to get together on Thursday to discuss order 214. So with all due respect, if you want this, make a motion to amend, at least put it on the floor and then make a motion to postpone it to Thursday. So that we don't end up on Thursday staring at each other for 20 minutes while nobody makes the motion. If this has support and you want it, then put it up. I don't. I've had enough. I mean, I think that after several months of reviewing this, hours and hours of meeting and reading, that that's the least you can do. And by the way, not just for the benefit of counselors who are understandably frustrated, and maybe I'm speaking for myself on that, but for the benefit of the public, this does not exist. Get a packet with what? This amendment doesn't exist. It's an email from the. doesn't exist. It's an email from the mayor. The mayor, with all due respect, the mayor does not have the power to make an amendment on the floor. So what counselor supports this and wants this? And if you think that this amendment is incomplete or missing something, then who's going to put that work in? I yield.
Counselor Connell's next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, I believe that Counselor Zed is correct that we don't have a substantive matter before us. There's a suggestion that, that some amendment is in the offing, but a counselor has not sponsored an amendment. And having received it so late in the day today, I'm not sure that we are qualified to evaluate the subtleties that may exist in that, in that, in that proposal. So I would support moving our meeting to Thursday with apologies to the Budget and Finance Committee. The counselor from Ward one has very diligently scheduled his meetings so that we could all see when they are. We understand that there's some time sensitivity here. I don't know if a, an alternative date might also accommodate the, the research that we have to do. You know, so if we cannot or should not discuss it tonight, I would, I would like to see a, a date certain in the near future when we could have a substance debate on the matter at hand as it may be amended.
Thank you. Back to Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, thank you. Budget and Finance is scheduled to meet at 6:30. I see no reason why the council couldn't meet at 7:30, right? I would, I would leave that to the president's discretion and to work that out. So, you know, I don't think that's a legitimate objection.
Thank you. Just on the, you know, what can go into the packet? You know, you, we've used the packet in the past to give people notice of something in writing so that if it's too voluminous. But I hear what counselor saying, counselor from Ward one, but I don't think, I don't think it's a rule violation. I don't think we have to make a motion tonight to amend. I can see the, I can see the merits of doing that. Just saying, I don't think it's against our rules for a counselor, the counselor to put something in the packet for a special meeting. Go ahead, Counselors Z.
Well, I would challenge the chair on that. I mean, the rules that, you know, basically call for a sponsor on items. And if you're going to bring this in as a, as a new item, are you asking the clerk to notate it as an order? Are you asking for him to notate it as a communication and to get a number on its own? Are you expecting?
No, no, I, I, let me, let me be clear. It, it would be, and we've done this before over the past seven years. Someone anticipates that they're going to make a motion on the floor. Any of the 11 of us. It is possible to put that in the packet ahead of time. It does not have to, it does not have to be a new order. We've done that in the past. If they don't make the motion on, if, say we have the special meeting and nobody makes the motion, then you're right, there's nothing to act on. But that doesn't bar them from sending a communication. I'm sorry, I shouldn't use the word communication, sending a document in advance that puts people on notice about what their motion is going to be. We've done that.
But again, Mr. President, no one, I mean, if you want to pick and have nuances about the rules, but the reality is, is no one has claimed this amendment tonight. No one. No one has raised their hand and says, yep, this is mine. I'll be making that amendment on Thursday. So you want more time to have the same meeting in two days? Not fair and not right. And what is the, what is the, what is the public supposed to take away from that, by the way? That what? That something could happen? The packet is not a binder of paperwork for, just for fun. It's, it needs to have some substance to it. And I guess I don't understand.
Let's see, let's see if someone wants to sponsor, intends to sponsor amendment. Counselor Tantar.
I will sponsor it without doubt. I will not, I did not want to move to amend Order 214 tonight, out of consideration for the fact that the council has received this so late. And out of consideration of the fact that it's, it's a complex amendment and the public has not seen it. There's nothing, it's perfectly right to do it. And I don't like being told I'm doing something that's not right. I will sponsor this and I think we should do it on Thursday. You don't want to do it? Well, no.
Back to Counselors Z.
I will be voting no, but I do have one last question to the, to the counselor and thank you for doing that. Is your intention to, to amend this exactly as the documents have been presented here? Or do you anticipate further changes? And if so, when would we get those?
Um.
Are you happy with the language as it is?
It, I, I don't intend to, to amend it myself between now and Thursday. I, of course, I, I have no idea what will happen on the floor Thursday. I don't know the future.
Counselor Vogel's next.
Thank you, Mr. President. To, to the possibility of amending what has just come in, I think that there's a possibility of amending that. Who knows? There's no possible way that any one of us could have spent any amount of time delving into this and getting all the information that we need in order to discuss this with any, you know, thoroughness. So is there a possibility that that language that came in is going to be, offer a change to it? Certainly. I, I read that thing a half a dozen times or more and I, I did, more research needs to go. I need to understand it. So yeah, it may change, but not tonight. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Devlin.
I, I'm not sure why the same argument we just had about the Plum Island ordinance suggestion wouldn't apply here, that the motion could be made to amend. And then we continue that discussion until Thursday. It doesn't mean if that amendment loses, we're back to the original ordinance. So at least we have an actionable thing to do on Thursday. I, I don't, I don't, again, I, this, this strikes me as the same reason that we didn't get it 10 days ago when this was discussed. This, this was floating about 10 days ago. This is brinksmanship. This is game playing. And my time is too valuable for that. My time with my family is too valuable for that. And so, you know, because you say tonight, I motion to, to amend, to adopt the language that was sent to us, and then we, we carry that over till Thursday, that doesn't lock you in to not, to, to change, but it certainly gives us, you know, something just like the discussion about Plum Island. It's just a discussion starting point. We're, we're changing the ordinance completely and, but, but it's just a starting point. So, you know, if that argument, I just, we talk about process. People on this council, I've been talking about process since, since the, five, six years ago on the garage where everybody wanted to rush things through. And I said, I'm going through my process. And I got killed for that. But now everybody talks about process. I don't understand how this is not, we don't have a problem with this process. I don't, I don't understand why we're not hearing several people get up and say, is it because it's something that we want? So then this is maybe moving us towards getting us something we want. So process is not as important anymore? I, I just, I'm, I'm, we have to stay consistent. And, and I don't understand why someone, put your name on this. If you're intending on putting your name on it, put your name on it. It doesn't, if the motion loses Thursday, it loses. And then we're back to where we were. But if not, let's just get this done.
All right, I gotta call a five minute recess. Okay, we're back. So I consulted with Clerk Jones. And I think Counselor at Large Devlin and Ward one Counselor are correct in that what came out of committee was no recommendation. And then the motion that was made on the floor was to continue to a date certain. But there was no underlying motion to continue to a date certain. So I think it doesn't really matter what the motion is procedurally. It could be a motion to approve. It could be a motion to deny. It could be a motion to amend. But there has to be an underlying motion for us to continue it to a date certain. That's, that's my ruling. You can overrule me by two thirds, but that's, that's the way I see it.
Point of order, Council President, does that have to be from the Budget and Finance Committee only? Or could it be from anyone in the council?
No, because it came out of budget. It's on the floors before the council. Any counselor can make a motion of some kind, a dispositive motion to approve, to deny, to amend. And then that can be continued.
Thank you for clarifying.
So as a point of order, there is no motion on the floor at this time. The motion to continue that was previously made is out of order. So there's not.
Correct. It's out of order, right? We have to do it over. That's right. Out of order. There needs to be an underlying motion. Counselor Tantar.
Yeah, point of order, the, did you just say the underlying motion could be to amend?
Yes, it could. Yes.
Not without a matter up before us.
Yeah. I mean, well, it's, Order 214 is on the floor. But there's no, but how can you amend something when there's no motion on it?
Oh, I see.
Taken out of committee, right? So I mean, I think.
I see your point. I got it. I got it. So in other words, someone makes a motion to approve and then you make a motion to amend.
All right. I'm, I'm, I move that we approve Order 214.
Second.
All right. Any, any, well.
Further point of order, is it now in order for me to move that we delay consideration of Order 214?
Yes, yes. And now it is in order because there's an underlying motion. You don't, yes, that's correct.
I move that we delay Order 214 until February 25th. That's this Thursday.
Okay. All right. I don't know who the most senior person is to take the gavel because the mayor identified me as the person she had negotiated with. So before we go off into this, I should probably explain. Let's see. Counselor Connell is the most senior. But he may, he had his hand up to speak. So I can't.
I withdrawn my hand.
Okay. If you could please preside just while I make a statement.
Yep.
Is that all right? Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Counselor Agarwal.
Right. So my, my position has not changed since last fall. It's exactly the same, which is I oppose purchase of the, of the property. I oppose purchase of the property unless I knew that the wetlands would be protected. And then the mayor seemed to agree today that you could do a Article 97 conservation restriction on the wetlands per se. The difference between what was in the packet in December 14th and what she sent around by email is the mayor, the administration did not want to have the 25 foot buffer zone restricted by Article 97. Instead, there would be a two third super majority order by the council specifying, and it would be mentioned in the D, that there could be no building within that 25 foot zone. So that was the, that is the only substantive difference between what I was asking for in 2020 and what was emailed to you by the mayor today is the actual Article 97 restriction would only be on the wetlands per se. And then the 25 foot no build area would be imposed by order and deed, but it would not be protected under the constitution. That's it. I just wanted to clarify that. I don't want anyone to think that I changed my position since the fall because I, I haven't. It's the same. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other counselors who would like to speak at this time? I saw two hands, but one disappeared. So Counselor Zed.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to ask the, the Ward two counselor, the presumed sponsor of this amendment. What is your view on the implication for the youth services project that would have come out of the, of let's say, the approval of this amendment and its, and its potential subsequent approval overall?
First of all, by, excuse me, Counselor, another hand went up, but it disappeared. Did, did Counselor Lane wish to speak? Or may I recognize Counselor Agarwal?
No, I had nothing to say.
Well, Counselor Agarwal, if you'd like to reply.
Yeah. First of all, I'm not sponsoring this amendment. Counselor Tantar said he's going to sponsor the amendment. The amendment that I wanted was something that I had argued for last year and I didn't get. So I'm not the sponsor of this amendment. But as I understand what the mayor emailed around, what does it mean for youth services? Doesn't mean one way or another whether youth services can use the property because they're municipal purpose. And this, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is limiting it to municipal purpose. But it does mean that they could never build a building outside of the 35,000 square feet that we've been talking about as upland. They could never do that. No department could. It's unbuildable. That's the way I understand.
I'll ask the clerk to, there's no further discussion. I'm going to ask the clerk to explain what we're voting on, what the motion is before us.
Well, there's a motion to approve.
Yes.
And then superseding that, there's a motion to delay to a date certain by Counselor Tantar second and by Counselor Vogel. So we would be voting by roll call vote on the motion to delay the matter before the council to Thursday. We don't have a time, but I, it always said date certain.
Thank you. I was, I was going to ask about if the sponsor of that motion wanted to amend his motion and insert a time, which would seem appropriate.
I think the president probably has the latitude to set the time once he looks at the landscape.
I mean, I'll just tell you, my, my intention, my intention, my, my intention is to do it at 7:30. I don't want to disturb the Budget and Finance meeting.
Agreed. Yes.
You know, and, and again, I, I didn't, I'm not the one who's inflicted this on the council. That's why I feel compelled to speak. I've, I've had this position since last year. It's not new.
Interesting. Thank you. Counselor Tantar, no, your hand is down now. Counselor Zed.
And now your hand is down. Counselor Zed, did you wish to speak?
All set. Thank you.
Counselor Tantar, did you wish to speak?
Uh, no, I do not.
May I ask, the moving counselor, is he willing to accept the president's suggestion of 7:30? So we have a date certain and time certain.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the clarification, Clerk Jones.
Is the second Counselor Vogel okay with that?
Counselor Vogel, you're silent.
Yes.
Yes.
So now the matter is on a motion to delay to a date certain, which is Thursday the 25th at 7:30 PM.
Moved by Counselor Tantar, amended rather by Counselor Tantar, and the amendment was accepted by his second Counselor Vogel.
So that's the matter, needs a roll call vote.
If there is no further discussion, we'll proceed to a roll call vote on this matter. Clerk Jones.
Okay. Motion to delay. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Should have put your last, sorry.
That's all right.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Emphatically no.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
Counselor Agarwal?
Yes.
Motion passes. Matter is delayed until Thursday at 7:30.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. I relinquish the chair. Back to Council President Agarwal.
We're still in committee reports. Chair Z.
Motion to approve Order 235 gift from Jim McCarthy, $1,000. Motion to approve order two thirty five gift from Jim McCarthy, one thousand dollars in the amount of one thousand dollars.
Second.
This came through committee um at our last meeting. Um, this is a gift from a local resident and business owner, it is in the amount of one thousand dollars, it is designated for parks. There's no specific use for the money at this point that we've, that was identified, that the thousand dollars will go to something very specific. Just generally, it will be around trees. There is also, there, there's not a specific timeline for deployment by the Parks Department. But it will be used uh when, when it is possible. Um, the recommendation of the committee is an approval with gratitude to accept this gift by a vote of three zero.
Any other counsel?
Yeah, there's a motion, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you made a motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry, you've been second.
No, it's already been seconded, so, roll call.
Roll call on the, uh, accepting the gift from Jim McCarthy, uh, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
For Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Motion, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file communication two ninety one, F Y two thousand twenty one mid-year budget report.
Second.
Go ahead.
This was uh submitted to committee as a communication from our finance director Ethan Manning. The committee spent some time uh reviewing the sort of financial stats at the mid-year, at the fiscal year. As everybody knows, this is an odd fiscal year, because we did a three month appropriation, and then we did a remaining nine month appropriation. I'll just give you some very um high level highlights, um overall, the finance director reports in his view that expenses or collections are generally where they were expected to be and budgeted. Um, as you'll recall, the revenue estimates, particularly the local receipts and state aid, were um you know, up, up for debate and discussion, and they were reduced um during the budget process. Uh, one of the areas that is down most in terms of local receipts is in the licenses and permits line, we did spend a few moments discussing that. The decline here is primarily driven by the suspension of licensing fees by our licensing board last year, which was a decision made as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, not so much by a decline or any decline really in building permits, which is also in that line, so that's why we discussed that, just trying to get a bead on, on what's happening there. The Harbor Master posted um what looked like a very large increase of fifty percent um with, with a general understanding that last year was pretty much a banner year for voting. As folks thought, um other activities, with that being said, I guess the fifty percent number wasn't quite right, it's more like forty percent. There was an accounting uh number that moved around from, from one fiscal year to another, so still a, a big increase, but not quite um to that same level. The parking lot on Plum Island also experienced um some increased utilization, and as a result, um in- increased um fees. Fire overtime, um as you'll see there, is one of the potential upcoming transfers um is a little bit lower than I think most are used to seeing. And um there was a little bit of discussion around that, and, and why is that lower, and what does it, what is the purpose, or what is the reason it's a little bit lower? And there are two reasons, one is that um, and you see there, it's fifteen thousand dollars is the potential transfer. One reason is that um the, the line item itself was increased uh to, you know, what is considered a more sensible amount. As, as everybody knows, that line typically has run over historically in the last several years, and the other one is that over time some of it has been pushed off into the COVID uh funds that we received uh to the tune of about eighty six, eighty seven thousand dollars. So while it may feel like we've done really good at fifteen, there's a little bit more detail underneath that. Uh, finally, as of um, you know, as of two one, which is the report of this, it showed seventy five grand in snow and ice. By the time we had met on it, the finance director indicated that number was likely depleted. Obviously, we don't know what the rest of winter uh will bring us, but um, you know, likely, you know, some sort of a transfer in that amount uh would be required. Uh, more detail is available if you wish to have it on the COVID uh spending on the city side and the S R side, on the school side, if you're interested in it. But I think that that'll be something that'll be discussed as we go forward, because expenses have been pushed into those lines. Uh, including some that, you know, may recur even when the pandemic is done, and um that's a discussion that uh, that will have to be had in the upcoming budget process. In future years, the committee recommended a receive and file by a vote of three to zero.
Thank you, questions, comments, debate, roll call.
Motion receiving file communication two ninety one, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Final item, Mr. President, is communication two ninety eight, it's the Plum Island fiscal implications of sea level rise, we'd like to make a motion to receive and file that communication.
Second. Go ahead.
Um, this was placed into the Committee on Budget and Finance as a communication, more as a notification than anything else. Um, this is a Newbury-driven initiative, they sought out grant funding and received it from the state um to study the implications uh is specifically related to Plum Island and the related sea level rise, and they were able to bring Newbury Port into the conversation. Uh, the primary representative from Newbury Port will be uh the city's conservation administrator um who will, who will be on it. Um, I, I, my understanding is that um, you know, they have a, a group of folks as well. Um, I did personally make some suggestions that they ensure that residents have a seat at that table uh that they consider coordinating with the M R B A, and that um if at all possible, a draft report be published uh prior to finalizing it, there is no action to take by the council, there's no associated funding requested from or by the city of Newbury Port. Um, and the, the report is expected perhaps later this year, so the recommendation of the committee is to receive and file this by a vote of three to zero.
Thank you. Comments, questions, debate, roll call.
Receive and file communication two ninety eight, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
And Counselor Agarman?
Yes. Does that conclude your report?
Further items tonight, but I just want to remind you that um, you know, Fuller Field um is planning to plan to be posted for Thursday. Um, it was slated for six thirty, I'm not sure what to do with it now, but the Parks Director was slated to present at six thirty, and residents are aware of the meeting. So more than likely, what, what will happen is that the meeting will, the um, I may, I probably will have to move budget and finance uh up a little bit. So my colleagues, uh Counselor Khan and McCauley, if you're here, you know, might have to move to six o'clock, but I think with the intention that we're still going to start Fuller Field at six thirty. So that the third party is the Parks Director, the residents and so forth, who had expectations about when we would need justice uh can be met, and the only reason I'm saying this here is because that was posted committee of the whole. I did email you all the information that was made available to me, so hopefully you received it, and we can have a productive meeting on Thursday, and that concludes budget and finance.
Thank you. Uh, Chair Khan, education.
Yes, thank you, Council President, the education um uh committee will be meeting on March first. We have a, as you heard in the mayor's update, the kind of draft first kind of look at the school budget will be presented tomorrow at six thirty. Um, and I'm hoping to use our March first conversation to follow up with questions that counselors may have. Um, and for those who want to listen in, we'll have a, a copy of that presentation after it's released tomorrow to walk through um in, with whatever might be of concern that comes out or questions. If folks have any other agenda items, I will be posting that meeting um probably by Wednesday, so I encourage anyone um from my committee to, if you have any agenda items, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, general government's uh I'll take a uh, let's see, motion to approve the reappointment of K P Law.
So moved.
Second.
I'll give the report, so we did have a uh committee of the whole and general government meeting last week. We had Mark Rich, who's our uh contact at K P Law, come back to us, he'd had a similar meeting last year, and the committee recommended reappointment uh three to nothing. Other counselors? Roll call.
The uh approval of appointment two twenty nine, K P Law, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Nine yes, two no, motion passes.
Uh, I'd like to take a motion to approve uh late file order two forty on the COVID nineteen victims and survivors.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, this was a resolution that we also heard, uh just general government alone, not committee of the whole, mayor alluded to it in her report. This is an initiative that came out of the U S uh Council of Mayors nationwide uh to designate the first Monday of March, I believe, as a memorial day for COVID nineteen victims and survivors. Uh, we recommended approval three to nothing. Roll call.
Roll call, approving order two forty, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes. I'd like to take a motion from someone to receive and file communications two forty one and two forty two.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, these are in the packet, they're a leftover from last May. We have the work of the special committee that was formed uh pursuant to the charter. And there was a legal opinion rendered by K P Law about charter changes. All of this had been sent to the General Government Committee, it took us longer than I would have liked, it's my fault. But we did consider all of this, and uh the outgrowth of all of this work, as I mentioned before, is the ordinance that I sponsored earlier today, which uh is the, the result of our committee's work, general government uh synthesizing what we heard from the Charter Review Committee as well, so the, those are the changes that the committee recommended. Uh, but we no longer need these documents, they can be received and filed, and that was a three to nothing, uh general government. Any other counselor, roll call.
So motion receiving file collectively, communication two forty one and two forty two, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman, thank you.
Yes. Uh, that concludes general government, uh licenses and permits, Chair Devlin.
Uh, yes, motion to remove collectively ordinance forty seven and communication two two nine.
Where are those?
They're, they weren't in the uh consent agenda, so they're not out.
But I don't, I don't think they're in the packet.
Motion to waive the rules and remove would be in order.
Yeah, you want to, Chair, you want to do, do a combined motion on that?
Sure, motion to waive the rules and uh to remove ordinance forty seven and communication two two nine.
Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, uh, we are removing these for the purpose of uh I'm also going to make a motion now to um uh add the committee of the whole to these. Uh, it's my understanding that planning development will do the same thing with their uh, the ord- the ordinance that is in their um uh committee. It is important to note, the only ordinance that, that is in licensing and permits is ordinance forty seven. So uh, that's, you know, the only place it should be discussed or should have been discussed was in licensing and permits committee. Uh, but we're going to make it committee of the whole, so we can talk about them together in a joint meeting.
Thank you, uh, other counselors, so the motion is to uh waive, well, hold on. It, it, so far, it's just, it's just to waive the rules and, and take it out?
Right.
Okay. All right, so, so first things first, waive the rules and take it out, even though it's not in the packet, roll call.
Collectively, that's ordinance uh forty seven and communication two twenty nine.
That's right, both of them, yeah.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes. So Chair Devlin, you want to make the other motion?
Yeah, motion to uh add or make this committee of the whole for both those collectively.
But is it just going to stay with licenses and permits, or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, and to put it back into uh licensing and permits.
Okay, got it, everyone know what we're voting on, any discussion, roll call.
So motion to add committee of the whole for both matters and to refer back to license and permits, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes. Anything else?
That is it from the licensing and permits.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Chair Connell, Neighborhoods and City Services?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Chair Shan, Planning and Development?
All right, well, why don't we try to do the same thing we just did with the ordinance oh forty six and communication two thirty one, need to since they're not in the packet, but want to forego the rules and bring it out, so we can do a committee of the whole.
Second.
I, I'm sorry, which two?
Um, ordinance uh, ordinance oh forty six, the zoning amendment for short-term rental units and communication two thirty one, which is a short-term rental units letter.
Okay, sorry, I was thrown by that, okay, got it. Uh, do you want to speak to that, because there's also another counselor who wants to speak to it? Bringing it out, no?
To bring it out, so we can put it, make it committee of the whole and put it back into planning and development, so we can have the conversation with license and permits.
Okay, Counselor Zed?
I just wanted to ask a, a question, what is the status of the um, of the uh, of two things? One is the uh planning board hearing, is there still open on this zoning, and that's one question, just, yes, it's open or it's closed? And the second question is, what was the date of advertisement on this zoning, is it, is it uh dead already procedurally?
Dead, so right now, it's night, we've passed the ninety day mark from the last time we had the meeting, since nothing was acted on, we have to re-advertise the the meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? Everyone know what we're voting on? Roll call.
Motion to waive the rules and remove both ordinance forty six and communication two thirty one, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
All right, motion to make those two committee of the whole and refer back to planning and development.
Second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Lazeed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
All right.
Keep going.
Motion to receive and file communication two fourteen.
Second.
All right, so this was a letter that we received last year from the Central Congregational Church regarding the C P A funds. Since that was, uh, resolved, uh, in the last meeting with budget and finance regarding the removal of the last twenty-five thousand dollars, this letter is now overcome by a vote. So the committee voted three to zero to receive and file it.
Further discussion, debate? Roll call.
Motion to receive and file communication two fourteen, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Elaine?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Lazeed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
And Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Motion to receive and file communication two seventy, letter from, uh, to D C A M from Counselor Igerman.
Second.
Uh, God willing, we'll be done with this topic on Thursday night, but, uh, we did motion to receive and file this because, uh, well, we'll be done. It is referencing low street property, so it'll be done. So the council voted three to zero, committee voted three to zero to receive and file.
Uh, further discussion, debate? Roll call.
Receive and file communication two seventy, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Elaine?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
And Counselor Igerman?
Yes. Counselor Devlin has his hand up.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself out of abundance of caution for the next nomination, um, and, uh, or the appointment, excuse me. And I, I'm, I'm not going to come back. I don't see anything else coming out, so.
Hang on one second. How about we do appointment two thirty first? Cause I don't think you're going to recuse yourself from that.
Oh, I'm not. No, okay, excellent. Thank you.
Start there.
That's a good idea.
All right, motion to approve appointment two thirty, Joe Texera as the conserva, to the Conservation Commission.
Second. Second.
All right, the committee voted three to zero to approve our longstanding Conservation Commission Chair back to the Conservation Commission until twenty twenty-four. Had a nice conversation with him and, uh, committee voted three to zero to approve him.
Good choice.
Any comments? Uh, roll call.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Elaine?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Lazeed?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Igerman, thank you.
Yes. Uh, okay, before the recusal, could I get a motion to, uh, by majority vote, continue past eleven o'clock?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
I.
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 Roll call. I'm sorry, roll call.